Hi, I'm Nadia Combs, Chair of the Hillsborough County School Board. I want to welcome you to Hillsborough County Public Schools. We serve more than 200,000 students. That includes children in preschool through adults in our workforce program.
I'm Henry Shayk Washington, the Board Vice Chair. Our district is the seventh largest in America. And our team is made of more than 24,000 people, working at nearly 250 sites across the county.
Our district is diverse and dedicated. Our board meetings are held in our board auditorium on select Tuesdays at 4:00 PM. The best way to serve our students and our community is to involve you, the public, in what we do.
You are welcome to email or meet with any of our board members and follow our district on social media. Board meetings are covered live by Hillsborough Schools TV on Spectrum Cable Channel 635 and Frontier Cable Channel 32. Meetings are also streamed live on our website at hillsboroughschools.org. Closed captioning is provided on all broadcasts and past meetings are available in our online archive.
We are interested in what the public has to say. We'll include time for audience comments before we address our business items. Our agenda and any supporting materials can be viewed online in advance. They are posted seven days before each meeting on our website at hillsboroughschools.org.
Our vision is preparing students for life. And that means all students, every day. Todos los estudiantes, todos los días. Thank you for your interest in education. With your help, we're making decisions that shape our community's future.
The board meeting of March 21st, 2023 is called to order. Member Washington will now lead us in a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want a moment of silence for the Honorable Sam Bell, who served our community the majority of his life. Please join me. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated.
Member Washington, will you please acknowledge our wonderful student entertainment for today?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to thank the Coleman Jazzers, along with the band director, Mr. Ryan Herring, and Principal Dr. Odellis Pritchard. Will these wonderful students please come up and make a great introduction?
My name is Max Mindelson. I'm in 7th grade, and I play the bass.
My name is Madeline Kenyon, and I play the drums, and I'm 8th grade.
My name is Emery. I'm in 8th grade, and I play percussion.
My name is Ash. I'm in 8th grade, and I play piano.
My name is Neil. I'm in 7th grade, and I play the guitar.
My name is Reed. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Declan. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Luke. I'm in 8th grade, and I play trumpet.
My name is Gabe. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Phil. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trumpet.
My name is Graham. I'm in 7th grade, and I play the trombone.
My name is Connor. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trombone.
My name is Garrett. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trombone.
My name is Gabby. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the trombone.
My name is Elizabeth. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the saxophone.
My name is Pilar. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the saxophone.
My name is Eli. I'm in 7th grade, and I play the saxophone.
My name is Matthew. Oh, I'm in 8th grade, and I play sax.
My name is Grady. I'm in 8th grade, and I play the tenor saxophone.
My name is Ryan Herring. I'm the band director at Coleman Middle School. I just wanted to take a second to thank you guys for allowing us to come here and perform for you and your continued support in music education in our schools. We're very lucky to have you guys.
Thank you. And thank you all for doing a great job today. And if you have any family members, you can come up and take your pictures.
Yeah, let's stand up.
Yeah.
Stand up, yep. You guys are too tall.
At least they'll see my bald head, huh? Okay? Okay, thank you. Thank you. You're doing a good job.
Thank you all. When I was sitting there listening, I was like, are you sure this is middle school? It sounds like high school or college. I mean, really, a lot of amazing, amazing performers out there. Thank you. We have no withdrawn items today. I need a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. I have a motion by Member Vaughn, and I have a second by Member Gray. Any discussion? Please vote when your lights appear. Okay, thank you, members. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Let the record reflect that all board members are present today. We have one set of minutes to be approved today. That's March 7, 2023, school board meeting. I need a motion and a second to approve the minutes. I have a motion by Member Washington. I have a second by Member Vaughn. Any discussion? Vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. Board members, I'd like to go over the format of today's meeting. As a reminder, we're a nonpartisan board who believe that all children can be empowered to learn, to succeed, and our decisions will be made with that understanding. To pave the way for efficient and effective agenda statements and/or questions, board members will have five minutes to speak with 30 seconds for final thoughts. Afterward, the superintendent can respond. If you have further questions, you're asked to get back into the queue. Member Washington will now read the board guidelines.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As we begin this afternoon's meeting, let me quickly review the format of our school board meetings. Please silence all electronic devices. There are speakers in the room behind me that allow board members to hear the meeting upon stepping away or from the dais. This meeting can be viewed with closed caption on live webcast, on cable TV, on video monitors here in the auditorium. It also can be viewed with closed caption in the online video archives.
Thank you, Member Washington. We have one item scheduled for time certain, and that's 6 o'clock, and that's employee input. We will now move on to public comment. The board welcomes comments from citizens and values your input to the board. In order to provide the most comprehensive response to your comments, our staff will follow up with you and will keep our board informed about those responses. Our school board respects the public's right to speak to the board, and we appreciate you taking the time to be here. However, it is requested when you address the board, comments are not directed personally against a board member or staff member, but rather directed at the issues. Any behavior intended to interrupt the orderly conduct of this meeting will not be allowed. Our civility policy is in place. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. This afternoon, each speaker will have two minutes. Reminder that your two minutes start when you begin speaking. When there are 30 seconds left, you will see a yellow light on the lectern, a red light and a chime will indicate when your time is up. I will now call up the first five speakers. If you could please come up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Eichman. I'm here again from the Carrawood K-8 Initiative. And although I will be the only speaker from Carrawood today, I represent a very large community of supporters that couldn't be here. At the last workshop meeting on the 9th, we heard from Ms. Gray about how K-8 schools are not only desired but needed. We also heard Ms. Han, Ms. Runden, and Ms. Vaughn propose a piecemeal approach to the boundary analysis change and passing items that can be voted on now, like Carrawood K-8. Thank you for advocating for us. We appreciate your support and willingness to separate this item. We can't reiterate how important it is for this item to be passed as expeditiously as possible. We have a large number of families that are at a crossroad and are having to take other options because the timeline is getting short. Please accept this as a formal request to be placed on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you again for listening to the community and your constituents. We appreciate your time and support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Kemble. I lead one local organization, Community Issues Council, and one statewide Protect Our Children Project. We're proud to be members of the Hillsborough Grassroots Group. You'll be hearing from people from the Hillsborough Grassroots Group. We're here to remind you of Governor DeSantis' recent accusation that Hillsborough County has unlawful pornographic books in your school libraries. I'm reading now from State Statute 847.012, subsection 3. "A person may not knowingly sell, rent, or loan for monetary consideration to a minor any picture, photograph, drawing which depicts nudity or sexual conduct, sexual excitement, sexual battery, or any book, pamphlet, magazine, printed matter, however reproduced, that contains any explicit and detailed narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct and that is harmful to minors." Subsection 5 goes on to state, "An adult may not knowingly distribute to a minor on school property or post on school property any material described in subsection 3." Please keep the law in mind as people read from books that are currently available in Hillsborough County schools. There are schoolchildren who have signed up to speak. We ask you to allow them to speak first so they can leave before people start reading the pornographic material that we're asking you to remove from your libraries. You'll hear lots of disinformation about the governor's efforts and about our efforts, but the fact remains that you have illegal pornographic books in your school libraries. We're asking you to remove them.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, members of the board, and certainly Superintendent Davis. My name is Bill Kerber. I'm here reading statutes today for the Hillsborough County Citizens Defending Freedom. I'm here to read a couple of statutes, 847-001, which states harmful to minors means any reproduction, imitation, characterization, description, exhibition, presentation, or representation of whatever kind or form depicting nudity, sexual conduct, or sexual excitement when it is patently offensive to prevailing standards in adult community as a whole with respect to what is suitable material or conduct for minors and, taken as a whole, is without serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value for minors. The one that should concern us all is Florida Statute 1006.34. It's crystal clear in saying that any instructional material containing pornography or otherwise prohibited by Statute 847 may not be used or made available within any public school. We're here to ask today that this board step up and take this material off the counter, off the schools, the libraries, the shelves. This material is incredibly bad. You're going to hear some things today that actually make me cringe. I volunteered to read the statutes instead of a book. That's how bad some of this stuff is. So I'm asking you, please, step up and take these books off the shelf or move on and let us put some people in place. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jalecia. I'm 13 years old, and I know the basics of sex. But what I'm hearing about these books and public school libraries, I personally do not think that it is appropriate. Not even for me. I have smaller siblings, and I wouldn't want them knowing nor seeing any inappropriate images at their age. My mom is smart enough that she put me into a private school, sorry, because it looks like public schools are not taking the best interests in their students. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, all the above. My name is Shawn Roberts. I'm a founder of an anti-bully organization called AMREC. I'm here to read some books, well, excuse me, one particular book that's found in the high schools today. It's called Normal People, a novel by Sally Rooney. Their secret weighed inside her body pleasurably, pressing down on her pelvic bone when she moved. When he touched her, the night she was so wet, she rolled her eyes back into her head and said, "God, yes." She was allowed to say it. No one would know. He was afraid he would come then and just from touching her like that. When they went upstairs, he didn't say anything. He let her talk. "That's so good," she kept saying. "That feels so good." Her body was so soft, white like flour dough. He seemed to fit perfectly inside her. Physically, it just felt right. And then he understood why people did insane things for sexual reasons then. Her breath sounded ragged then. He pulled her lips back against his body and then released her slightly. She made a noise, like she was choking, then and again, and told him she was going to come. I'm just reading some of the excerpts of some of the books that are in the school. When I was growing up, we were kids. We enjoyed ourselves. We had fun. It's a different time, and it takes leadership to make tough decisions to save the kids. And so I leave everyone here with this. It's a spiritual war, and we have to pick the right side.
Thank you.
To help the kids. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Board, my name is Dave Coleman. I'm from North Florida Avenue, Hillsborough County. I've been here for 22 years. I recently viewed a workshop where it had to be discussed whether the words systemic racism even exist. And I watched members of this board brought to tears over that. My heart goes out to you. I understand that next week, there is going to be a discussion, a special open meeting on one book, a book called This Book Is Gay by Juneau Dawson. There's an opening line that I just read this morning. I haven't read the book, but it says, "In challenging times, it's more important than ever that we come together as a community and support one another. It all starts with kindness and compassion and you." And it is going to be up to you. As well as I need to express my concern that political aims and base rattling is reaching into our classrooms all the way from Tallahassee, right here, right here at home. Next week should be my school. My school board is not some kind of radical, left-wing, agenda-grooming-child entity. You are not that. You never were that. The things that are going to be read to you don't even exist in our school system. You guys are hard-working electors that wouldn't allow hate and criminal activities grooming children to occur anywhere near our children. And the so-called parental rights by the governor and his oligarchs are fine for them, except when they tell this parent what my rights are and where they stop. You cannot tell me how I raise my child. You cannot tell me what books are in the school for my child to see. You can stop it at your front door, and I can stop it at my front door. Thank you for your talk.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Camden. I turn 18 this Thursday. For fun, I play volleyball. I hang out with my sisters and my friends. I make bracelets for my company. I do not watch porn. I do not read porn. I don't do drugs or sleep around. I don't desire to do these things. My friends do not desire to do these things. No kids should desire to do these things. Watching porn isn't as common as you think it is, but you push it because of your Marxist agenda to sexualize children. Three years ago, my English teacher gave me a reading assignment. I came home from school and asked my mom to buy me a book for that class. Although I had options for what book to read, almost everyone in my class is reading the same book since my teacher indicated that it's a book many colleges require. I figured that it was the best choice. I was 15. I went home and asked my mom to get me the book. Before buying it, my mom found a review for that book online. Under the sexual content, the review said, quote, "Graphic detail is given about the incestuous rape of the 11-year-old main character. The book graphically discusses many sexual topics, including orgasms, prostitution, incest, rape, nudity, pornography, molestation, pedophilia, masturbation, sexual dreams, homosexuality, bestiality, and sodomy." I had never even heard of some of these words. I had no idea my teacher would ever suggest a book like this. I was 15. If at 15 years old, I would have thought that this was normal. I didn't want to read it then, and I do not want to read it now, even at 18 years old. But why? Why would you put this in schools or allow this? Oh, I know. You're just desensitizing me, my friends, my classmates, and my entire generation. It becomes your goal to sexualize us when you sit back and allow this to be done in your schools. Even if you eight didn't personally admit these books into schools, you're just as guilty as the ones who do because you sit back and do nothing.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon. My name is Macy Getperts, proud daughter of Julie Getperts, and I just turned 16 years old. I spend my time doing schoolwork, reading, and playing a lot of volleyball. I'm going to coffee shops with my friends, singing and playing piano and guitar. I love to read. A few years ago, when a friend offered me a book from the school library, I figured it wouldn't be polluted. When I brought the book home, my mom looked into it. We had a conversation about it, and I decided to return it to my friend. Thankfully, I didn't read far enough into the book to be exposed to the questionable content, but I was in 7th grade, 11 years old, and to think that I could have been exposed to pornographic content through my school seemed completely unfathomable at the time. On another note, as for those of you who claim all high schoolers are sexually active, I'm here to say that that is not true. Me and over 80% of my friends have never even gone as far as having our first kiss. Even if high schoolers were as sexually active as you claim, is it really a good idea to normalize it further? Shouldn't we be encouraging abstinence? I ask you to think. Think of the way that it is impacting the future generation. Think of the way it is turning my generation to think. Schools should be a place to learn math, science, reading, writing, history, what is necessary, not a place to hand porn to kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. My name is Dax Getperts. I'm in the 7th grade. I like playing baseball, basketball, football, riding my bike, learning new songs on my guitar, making funny videos with my friends, and I like being with my family. I also like to read. Right now, I'm reading a really good book called Crispin by Avi. It is a historical fiction book. It is about an orphaned boy whose own town is chasing him down, and he has to make decisions although his horrible circumstances. It is inspiring, adventurous, challenging, and it has heroes and villains. I think it is good for kids, no matter where they are in life, if they have a good family, bad family, or no family, that they can read this book, and it inspires them and shows them a better way, a way to find through bad things and still make good choices. Maybe they need to escape their circumstance and read something that gives them hope. They don't need to read books that make them feel trapped in a bad situation, like so many of the books my mom has told you about. Books like Crispin are what kids should be reading. There are so many good books, but why do you have to put the bad ones in? Kids my age do not need to read these books, and some of them probably don't even want to. But kids won't even know if they're picking up a bad book or a good book in the school library. And when they go to the school library, they would not think that there would be a bad one. If I picked up a book that had details about boys and girls my age doing inappropriate things together, like how my mom has talked to you about, I would know the right way that I shouldn't be reading it and that I should tell my parents. But I would be a little embarrassed and maybe even curious. That's why the parents should be the ones to decide. Why can't you just have books like the ones that I'm reading? Why do you have to make it tempting for kids and show them the things that they shouldn't be looking at or thinking about? These are topics way too advanced for kids my age, especially for kids who accidentally happen upon this type of book. Please don't teach kids about this my age. It is wrong, and you as adults should be the ones to know best. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Stephanie Pointer. I'm a community activist. I'm also a retired teacher. I'm here today to talk to you about Monroe Middle School. I'm opposed to HCPS selling any properties, period. I'm opposed to Monroe being subdivided and being sold, period. I live south of Gandy. That's what SOG means. So, those 25 acres, it is So, those 25 acres, it is in a coastal high hazard area. I have spent the last three years of my life fighting development in our community because we're full. If you look at the data that I've given you, I've given you a lot of data. I will be more than happy to sit down with each and every one of you. I've already called your assistants or sent emails and requested a meeting so that I can explain this data to you. I don't come to the school board often. This CHHA, which is the Coastal High Hazard Area, it says that there's not supposed to be any new, new density in these areas. Yet, if Monroe is sold, we are looking at between 250 and 675 new housing units. Where will you send those children to middle school? I mean, seriously? You're going to take away our middle school and then say, "Oh, let's build 675 units." It makes no sense. Madison Monroe have an additional 4,179 units. That's not counting single-family homes. That does not count single-family homes in our four square miles of south of Gandy, west of Dale Mabry, 4700 or 4,100, okay? Where are those kids going to go to school? If you look at the data, all the data on those sheets, I have pulled from GIS. All of those maps were made by Hillsborough County. All of them, all of the data I pulled specifically from the website for Hillsborough County Schools. And it caught, there's a lot of contradictory information in there. I'm very, very concerned about it. Please reach out to me so we can sit down and discuss this. I would have loved to have my three minutes.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you.
I'd like to read to you a small excerpt from Empire of the Storms by Mrs. Sarah Maas. She didn't give him the chance to explain as she traced her tongue over the seam of his lips, as her fingers unlatched the buckle of his worn sword belt. And just to see what he had do, just to see what he would do, she palmed him through I was victimized at eight by somebody who was aggressive and used my naivety to trap me. The consequences of that lasted for a decade. I was innocent before, and I wished to have maintained that innocence until I was more As a citizen, I don't intend to come up here and to be a proponent of censorship for fully mature adults. This type of thing is causing victims, and this type of literature is grooming people to a destructive lifestyle that is evident to me as I go back to every class reunion to the folks that fell in it. Prepare our children for the future.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Alfred Johnson, born and raised right here in Tampa, Florida. I now lead a community organization called the Faith Action Ministry Alliance. A quote for you, "Leadership that exploits and sacrifices young people on the altar of its goals is nothing more than raw demonic power. Genuine leadership is found in ceaseless efforts to foster young people and to pave the way forward for them." What I'm about to read to you right now is not the way forward. This comes from a book called It Ends With Us by Colleen Hoover. I'm going to read. One of his hands moves to the back of my bra, and he unfastens it with ease. He pulls my shirt and bra over my head. I begin to push myself off of him so I can pull off his jeans, but he pulls me back onto his lap. He lowers his mouth to my chest, and my eyes fall shut, and when I feel his tongue slide across my breasts. His other hand slowly begins to find its way between my legs and then inside my panties and then inside of me. He pulls my hips back to meet him, and then I can feel him freeing himself from his scrubs. He grips my hip and with one hand while shoving my panties aside with the other. Then he pushes forward until he's all the way inside of me. His hand slides down my stomach and settles between my legs. I can no longer keep up with his rhythm. I can barely even stay on my knees. He's somehow holding me up with one hand and destroying me in the best possible way with the other hand. Folks, this stuff right here is very embarrassing for me to read to you as a pastor in the community, and we've got to wake up. You can't keep doing this. You can't allow this stuff to happen to our children. The last verse in the Old Testament of our Bible says this, "I'm going to send my messenger ahead of you to restore the hearts of fathers to their children and children to their father, to their fathers. If it doesn't happen, I will smite the earth with a curse." When you consider the consequences of bad policy that's affecting our country, how it's playing out in our young children and in our teenagers and young adults, I need for you to consider whether or not we fall in the category of those that rejected that admonition.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, Members, and Superintendent Davis. My name is Dorothy Poulter, and I live in Wyomama in the county. I'll be reading from Rainbow Boys by Alex Sanchez, and there are 13 books available in the high schools in our county. Then he would slip his hand into her blouse, and she would remove her bra. Her breathing would come in short little bursts. Then he would slide his hand into her pants, and her breathing would become longer and deeper. Once she began to moan, he knew she was ready for him. Quote, "Tell him you want to suck his dick," end quote. Would Blake think he was too small? If he did, it certainly didn't stop him from what he was doing. Nelson breathed fast, his heart pounding. He felt ready to explode. As if reading his mind, Blake retracted his hand. He leaned back into his seat and grinned expectantly. Nelson wondered what exactly Blake expected him to do. Fortunately, Blake helped by guiding his hand Nelson couldn't believe to wear. Once he got over his astonishment, he tried to unbuckle Blake's belt. Nelson propped his elbow on the stick shift, and the belt buckle snapped open. He tucked open Blake's zipper. Blake laid a hand behind Nelson's neck, gently directing his head down. A rich, musky smell wafted up. Through the murk of his brain, Nelson remembered something. What about a condom? His heart thundered faster and harder till it seemed to burst. Nelson looked down at the soft blond hair and broad shoulders of the man he'd let inside him. When their mouths reunited and they kissed with an urgency from which there was no turning back, he moved his hands down his back and felt how hard his body was. Their movements hastened as they groped and bumped, and Kyle's excitement mounted till he feared he couldn't contain it.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ricardo Rodriguez. I'm a parent of two beautiful girls, and today I will be presenting about the book This Book Is Gay by Juno Dawson. There's a total of two copies, actually, in a middle school. We're talking about kids the age of Dax, we talked a couple of minutes ago, or even the kids that were in the band. This book not just violates Florida's statute 847, but promote pedophilia and explicit sexual content at a very, at a very early age, which we're talking about kids around 11 years old to 14 years old. From page 182 to 83, teach kids how to sign up for a profile called Grindr. This is an adult's profile for gay couples that actually requires to be 18 years old. From page 184 to 86, give reviews from men's 20 years old to 34 on how this app can help you to find quick, easy, and uncomplicated sex. But where I want to bring your attention is a few pages of explicit sexual content. The first one is found on page 199, where a married man have sex with a 16-year-old boy. Last time I checked, this was against the law. It was called pedophilia. We have it for kids' books. Page 200 have a section called bump, and I quote, "Of your bump, you have a prostate gland which feels nice when massaged." Or should I talk about the page 201? "A good handle is all about the wrist action. Rub the head of his cock back and forward with your hands." What about page 202? Have a section called blowies. "It's not more about sucking. It's more about sliding your mouth up and down the shaft of his cock. Letting a guy cum in your mouth is safe sex no-no." Porn is harmful for, and illegal for minors, and for those of you, we have given you the trust to do what is right. For those of you that have been in favor of this tragedy for the school, my message to you is in Isaiah says, "Seek the Lord while he may be found. Call upon him while he is near, and he will have compassion of you." Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board members, Chairman Combs, Administrator Davis. My name is Bob Perato. As a former chairman of the Florida Board of Pharmacy, I was very concerned about the medicinal health of our patients in, here in Florida. My wife was a senior occupational therapist, Hillsborough County School System, for 35 years. We're very concerned about our children. I have four grandchildren, 11 to 16, and this just concerns me. I'm going to read some excerpts. My wife was supposed to come read this, and she couldn't do it. So I told her I would do it for her, and today's our 53rd anniversary. That's my anniversary present to her. But anyway, I'm going to read from a book, Living Dead Girl by Elizabeth Scott. There's 11 copies of this book in high schools and middle schools here in Hillsborough County. I've tagged five pages out of 70 that all had extremely, you know, worrisome things for our children to hear, but I'm going to read a few. "I know, silly girl, my girl." As he unbuckles his pants, opens his pants, "Come over here, give me a kiss hello." I get up and I walk over to him. He frowns, and I hunch over, so I barely come up to his shoulder. Then he shoves me to my knees. When he's finished, he throws the rest of my yogurt away. "We have a two-bedroom apartment because we are father and daughter, and he wants to take care of me, wants me to have my own room like other little girls." And then he crawls into my bed with me. "Love you," he says before he falls asleep. "Love you too, but it is none too late," as he holds me down, breathing hard and fast. "Show me," he says, "show me." So I do. That's only one of the five very disturbing pages I had here to read, and I know my time's running out, but I'm going to read, try to get the last one. "He cries and says he's sorry, so sorry, and do I forgive him? Head on my lap, breath hot on my thighs. I say yes for her. I say yes, and I used to figure out how."
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Happy anniversary. Next, next.
Speaker, please.
My name is Anita Murphy. I don't want to be here. This is horrible. This book is called Triangles by Ellen Hopkins. There are six books in our high schools. This is page 40. "The kiss I return is not gentle." This one may have been read previously, so I'm going to skip, sorry. This is page 140. "In unison, to the taut knots that are my nipples, he grows rigid against my leg, and I sigh but say nothing, afraid words will wake me from whatever dream this has become. One finger, two, go inside me, three, plunging, I am close but fight cresting with all I have. He licks along my torso, and his face seeks the V between my thighs, tongue joining fingers. But when he pushes inside me, the intensity of his thrust is nothing I've ever known." This is page 160. "She is bold, kissing me without clear invitation, or maybe I did invite her somehow. No matter, I can't help but kiss her back. Her, I'm sorry, her pout is yielding, her tongue, the gentle flick of a serpent testing, and she tastes of berries. 'Lie back,' she says. She lifts my top, licks me from my navel upward, her hair a soft trickle over my belly. It smells of summer, hyssop and rose, a hint of grass. I close my eyes, give myself up to the carousel whirl, sling gloss lips and practiced tongue, circling, circling, lifting me close and closer to the horizon. And when she goes down on me, there is an eloquence no man could match. But I understand why she said being with women is easy. Naive about how to give back, all I have to do is try."
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Mary Wells. The Nowhere Girls by Amy Reid. 77 in high schools of these. 11 are currently checked out. Page 9. "In a very different neighborhood, a very different girl closes her eyes and lets go, feels the boy's head between her legs, painting pleasure on her body with his tongue, just like she taught him." Page 46. "Virgins count double," he says. Most of the guys laugh. Start with the freshmen, they're the easiest." Page 62. "I'm 15 and about to make out with one of the most popular seniors in the school. I'm not even sure he knows my name, even though, even though, even though his body's so heavy on top of mine, I can't move. I can't breathe, I don't want this. I don't want this anymore. I want to push it, but my wrists are pinned down and my pants are off, and it's too late, it's too late. It's too late to say no. Her last solid memory is pain, then black, then nothing, then grief grasps for air. Tiny moments, bright flashes in the darkness, memories surface like tight bubbles. Hands, bed, pain, fear, a searing inevitability, a life taken and redefined. Stillness, a heavy blanket of flesh unmoving. She lets herself hope it's over. Another voice, yeah, no one's coming. Did you look at, did you lock the door? His voice, you ready, Anis? Are you going to be a pussy? Another voice. She knows this voice. Everybody knows Eric Jordan's voice. Fuck, Anis, it's my turn. A rhyme for children, one, two, three, how many can there be? A thaw, I'm going to die, rocking, thrashing, a violent seal, and then no more, no more, more than possibly I imagined. A voice, turn on the lights, a man, I want to see her. Head on her mouth, shoving her voice back inside. She sees nothing, she's dying, she's dead. She's a whale carcass torn apart by eels at the bottom of the sea. Fuck, she's puking. A voice, just turn her over. It's morning, and she's only mostly gone, her hair's caked with puke. She hurts all over, she hurts inside. The floor is littered with crumpled clothes and half a dozen used condoms. How vile this tiny sliver of gratitude.
Thank you. Next speaker. Thank you. Next speaker.
Chairman Combs, Board members, Superintendent Davis, I would like to thank you for giving us the opportunity for these people to speak today. My name is R.L. Hill. I would like to thank you as members of the board, but I cannot do that today. Instead, I turn to those in the audience that have spent countless efforts and time to expose the pornography that this board has allowed in our public schools. People I'm referring to know who they are so publicly. I would like to thank you for your efforts. Thank you. To the board, you have been successful in allowing this pornographic material into our schools, all of you. But every day, more and more Hillsborough County residents are becoming aware of the Marxist, Marxist agenda that you support. In time, it is my belief that the laws and/or statutes of the statutes that address prohibiting pornographic filth to our children in the state of Florida will be enforced, and all of you will be held accountable. Lastly, I would like to have an answer before the end of this meeting, why if this is a part-time job, we cannot meet at seven o'clock in the evening instead of four o'clock in the afternoon, when people that actually work for a living can make the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, Members, Superintendent Davis. My name is Serenity Ball. The name of the book I'm going to be referencing today is The Vagina Monologues. There's one book at Blake High School, and just the majority of the book is horrific. This is the Valentine's Day edition. I have a daughter that's nine, and imagining her reading this book, once she, she could read it now, it's, I mean, it's easy enough for her to read now, but the thought of her getting hands on it made me, is making me shake. I just slid it into my vagina. It was suddenly easy, and I fit. I was all warm and pulsing and ready and young and alive, and then without looking, with my eyes still closed, I put my finger on what had suddenly become me. There was a subtle quivering at first, which urged me to say, then the quivering became a quake, an eruption, the layers dividing and subdividing. Then the quivering became a quake, an eruption, the layers dividing and subdividing. The quaking broke open into an ancient horizon of light and silence, which opened onto a plane of music, colors, and innocence, and longing, and I felt connection, calling connection, and I lay there thrashing about on my little blue mat. I wore outrageous outfits when I dominated women, lace and silk and leather. I used props, whips, handcuffs, ropes, dildos. There was no wetness, no dark mysterious foreplay. There was no erect nipples, there was no delicious mouths, but mainly, there was no moaning. I became a moaner. It most, it made most men anxious. Frankly, it terrified them. I was loud, and they couldn't concentrate on what they were doing. They'd lose focus, they'd lose everything. They couldn't make love to people in homes, we were, the walls were too thin. I got no reputation in my building, and people started staring at me with contempt in the elevators. Men thought I was too intense, some called me insane. I began to feel bad about moaning. I got quiet and polite. I made noise into a pillow instead. I learned to choke on my own mold."
Thank you. Next speaker, and if we could have speakers 18 to 25 to please line up against the wall. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, members, Superintendent Davis, member Vaughn, I hope we're not boring you during this. I'm gonna be reading from, my name is Stephen Galindo, I'm so sorry. I'll be reading, the excerpts I'll be reading are from "Doing It: Let's Talk About Sex" by Hannah Witten. This book is in two of our Hillsborough County high schools. "He's just chased you through an airport to stop you from getting on an airplane and flying to your new dream job. Would you give up said dream job for Mr. Sexy Metal Hand? I slept with somebody whose birthday is February 14th, and he had a birthmark on the shape of a penis, excuse me, in the shape of a heart on his penis." This is from page 29. "When I was in school, mostly inspired by Angus, thongs, and full-frontal snogging, my friends and I came up with our own kissing scale. Level 3 is we should date or we should hang out. Potential to date, the idea of seeing you naked does not repulse me. Knows how to dress, we can maintain a conversation. I'm conscious of my behavior around you. Level 5, fire in my loins. I would have sex with you multiple times. You are my number one. I think about you, a lot. I wish you were here." This is from page 49. "What if I come early? Sex isn't an endurance test, you see, like you see in some porn. Also, it's quite likely that if you have a penis, and the first time you have sex, you will ejaculate quickly, and that's fine. If you're with someone, and they come, or come early, don't make it, don't make them feel embarrassed, like they probably already feel. And what if I don't come at all?" From page 54. "My tips for having non-painful sex. Lube, go slow, lots of foreplay, relax, breathe, and have fun. Remember, you can stop at any point, and be in a position where you are in control, i.e., on top." From page 99. "Alcohol and Sex." I know this book is aimed for readers 14 and older.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
My name is Karen Leonardo. I'll be reading from Tricks. It's another lovely book by Ellen Hopkins, not really. 33 books are in our area high schools. First part I'm gonna read is very mild. "He is and let his hands explore the rounds of my breast, move in tighter and tighter, orbits, and now fingers circle the hard center nubs, raised like it's cold in here." Oh, by the way, this book normalizes teenage sex, rape, and paying for sex. Second, page 120, but page one's even more. "Did you like 'Use Your Mouth'? Her eyes light up. Is she waiting for a blow-by-blow description?" Page 268. "So, I'll go find a sponsor, some old Viagra stiff queen, hopeful that buying a drink means buying a lay. They were thick as flies." The truth. This is page 291. "The truth. I totally wanted to pop your cherry. You are my first virgin, and you'll probably be my last, because, sorry, but virgin sex isn't really very good. I jerk my hands off his legs, wobble to my feet. Fuck you. I can't believe that's all you meant to me, that's all I meant to you. One more gulp, and I repeat, fuck you." Page 300 and 301. "I stare at evil. I said no. No extra charge, already paid $200 for a good time with you. Might as well make it very good. He's on me, yanking my hair, pushing me to my knees. He flips me over, you're even prettier from behind, know that? I hear his zipper lower, it is loudest sound ever. Don't. I try, but it sticks, pasted to disgust lodged in my throat. Useless to plead, useless to fight. He yanks down my shorts in a single swift motion. He is on me, in me, humiliating me in every possible way, right here on the kitchen floor."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, members. My name is Jeffrey Franklin, and I am here today to bring your attention to another book, "Kite Runner" by Khalid Husini. "He handed his cigarette to the guy next to him, made a circle with the thumb and index finger of one hand, poked the middle finger of his other hand through the circle, poked it in and out, in and out. I knew your mother. Did you know that? I knew her real good. I took her from behind by that creek over there. What a tight little sugary cunt she had." It goes on. "Fine," Asaf snapped. "All I want you weaklings to do is hold him down. Can you manage that?" Wally and Kamal nodded. They looked relieved. Asaf knelt behind Hassan, put his hands on Hassan's hips, and lifted his bare buttocks. He kept one hand on Hassan's back and undid his own belt buckle with his free hand. He unzipped his jeans, dropped his underwear. He positioned himself behind Hassan. Hassan didn't struggle, didn't even whimper. He moved his head slightly, an iconic glimpse of his face, saw the resignation on it. It was a look I had seen before. It was the look of the lamb." It goes on. "My mind flashed to that winter day six years ago, me, peering around the corner in the alley, Kamal and Wally holding Hassan down, Asaf's buttock muscles clenching and unclenching, his hips thrusting back and forth. You have the look of a desperate man. He was quiet for a long time. There is Talib official, he muttered. He visited every once, he visited once every other month or two."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is Vincent Murphy, and this book is in 12 high schools, "What Girls Are Made Of." And I'll be starting on page 34. "In my room, I lit candles with Asaf, which Asaf didn't mention. When he foes me onto the bed, the one on the nightstand flickers out. He shrugs out of his sweater, pulls off his t-shirt over his head, tosses it aside, and then kicks out of his shoes and yanks down his jeans and his underwear. In one fierce movement, there he is, naked, thick thorn of him, wet tipped and hard, and a rush of wetness floods the cotton lining of my thong. Take off your bra." Later on, it says, "Asaf thrusts forward onto the bed and between my legs and against the thin lace barrier that separates us. My thong gets twisted as Asaf takes it off, and I hear it rip when he grows impatient and yanks too hard. Then Asaf rises, shows, shoves, rises above me like a wave and smiles, and I smile back. And then he pushes into me hard and fast, and it hurts, and it feels good, all mixed together. He puts one hand on my stomach to hold me still. He likes it best, he says, when I don't move a lot, when I let him be in charge, and I know too that he likes to feel himself inside of me, under his hand, the back-and-forth motion of it. And I brace myself for a second, for the way he usually pulls out roughly right at the end, but then he looks into my eyes and grins and asks, 'Okay? Okay,' I answer. And then his eyes close, and his mouth twists, and a vein on his forehead bulges out, and he thrusts again and again hard into the center of me, and I want to be like it, but I sort of don't. And I'd feel him spasm and spasm, and he makes a sound that would be funny in a different circumstance." This book's not appropriate for kids in middle school or high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, board. Major Maxim, U.S. Army retired. I was at Guspo, or Governor DeSantis's brief a couple weeks ago, and I was very disturbed about what was going on in this county. As a retired Army officer, I believe that there is clear crimes that are being committed right now, and I asked the board to enforce the law, because if I did this, I would be arrested, and that's all I have to say. So thank you very much. Enforce the law. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Combs, board members, Superintendent Davis. My name is Sue Zeeley. The book I've got today, I don't have the complete book, but it's called "The Art of Racing in the Rain" by Garth Stein. There are 17 of these books in middle and high school. On the surface, it looks like a really cute book, because it's written from the dog's point of view, from the time he's a puppy until he has to be euthanized. But on the surface, or on the cover of the book, it clearly states "adult," and it states "Content Warning," and then goes into the content warning that it's for adults. So this book is in clear violation of the statutes that we have discussed. The first one that I found on page 17. "They fell into bed, and he mounted her, and she said, 'The field is fertile, beware.' And he said, 'I embrace fertility.'" And he plowed the field until it grasped the sheets and its fists, arched its back, and cried out with joy. Of course, she had the advantage of her tongue and her thumbs, and when I watched her kiss and fondle him, sometimes she would glance at me and wink as if to gloat. Look at my thumbs, see what they can do." Because this is written from the dog's point of view, he has no thumbs. "And one evening after dinner, which was a special one, though I don't remember if it was birthday or anniversary, Denny suddenly appeared naked in the bedroom, and Eve was naked on the bed. It seemed so odd to me that they hadn't mounted or even played with each other in such a long time, but there they were. He positioned himself over her, and she said, 'The field is fertile. I embrace fertility,' he said, but their exchange seemed weak and unenthusiastic." It goes on, and it gets worse, and they have a scene of rape with an underage person. So I just implore you, please, remove these books from our middle schools and high schools. Children don't need to be reading these, let them be kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And if we could, if we could please have speakers 30 to 35 line up against the wall. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Superintendent, members of the board. I appreciate you letting us speak here. It's terribly uncomfortable. I'm an active member of my church. I have three children, young children as well. And there's a book I'm gonna be reading an excerpt from. I'm not terribly concerned with finishing it, because I've scanned through it, and there's countless scenes, and it's the gist that you get. My prayer coming over here was, what can be effective? What's an effective sounding board for you guys? And I think you're hearing content, and I'll share some content. This book is "Maybe Not." It's a novella by Colleen Hoover. It's on the website of the author, and you heard another Colleen Hoover book here, 17 and up. And it's in, it's an easy one. It's in one school, it's in one high school. We need to get it removed, and I think this'll be easy after this, this brief excerpt here. Self-discipline is practiced, and these being accessible for children isn't how we practice that. "She stops mid-ran, as soon, as soon as I cup her between the legs. I reach down to her thighs and spread her legs with my hand. I keep my eyes focused on her anyway, as I slowly push two fingers inside of her, waiting for her to moan into her pillow. She doesn't make a sound, so I pull them out and re-enter with three fingers this time. She pulls at my hair and spreads her legs for me, wanting me to bury myself inside of her. I do. I push her panties aside, and I shove into her so hard and fast she lets out a moan. I take one of her breasts in my hands and bring it to my mouth. I slowly kiss my way down to her stomach, and try, I smile triumphantly, press my lips to her stomach again. My tongue slides against her, separating her. She lifts her hips several inches off the bed and cries out, so I grip her waist and pull her back down to the bed. She's sweet and salty, and appears to satiate every ounce of hunger I have for the rest of my life. I continue to lick her, devour her, run my tongue over every bare part of her." Let's just get it out.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jennifer Foboe. I just recently relocated from Fairfax County, Virginia, to get my three children out of this kind of environment, and I am very disappointed in what I'm seeing, being back for six weeks in the school system. I had initially told our group that I would be happy to read the most worst controversial book that you could hear that is in our schools, and I was flabbergasted to see that out of 29 high schools, it's in six. And it took me until way into my adulthood to say a couple of these words, and it was only to explain how inappropriate they were to my children at the time. I have a 21-year-old graduating college this next month, I have a 13-year-old, and I have a 9-year-old. And the word cock was listed 16 times on one page, just once. I would implore you all to get these out of our schools. These kids don't need it. I'm a single mother of three boys. I have raised these boys to be respectful, strong, community people. I look up at all of you, and I see no reaction, and I'm, I'm flabbergasted. And when I say I have run very large boards in Virginia, I have seen people, I would be sitting in your spot devastated. My face would drop. In all due respect, I see no reaction out of any of you. My superintendent knew me by face, by name, and saw me coming through the door, and her shoulders shrugged every time, because she knew that I was never gonna stop until this was out of my kid's face. It is sexualization. It's not political, it's not religious, and in some cases it is. For some of us, it might be religious, but that's us as parents' choice and determination. If there's a parent who wants to teach these kids these books, by all means, let them, on their own time, not in the school system where my 9-year-old, who is the worst of the worst, will find his way to these books and come home and be like, "Woohoo, mommy, look what I found." It's not appropriate. It is not the place.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker.
Thank you, Chair, Board, and Superintendent. I appreciate your attention to all of this this afternoon. The book I am reading from is "Winter Keep" by Christian Kachor. There are at least 13 books in Hillsborough County Library, School Libraries, High School, and Middle School. So this is for 11-year-olds. "Convinced mother that she'd come to the attic for this very purpose. She thought they should probably stay there kissing for a little while, but that they didn't do, need to do much more. The guard didn't try to press her. He was much less grabby than she was used to, but she felt him grow hard. She heard the soft, desiring noises he made. His hands were gentle, wishful but cautious. It was different from everyone else she had kissed." Goes on. "She reached for his hand and put it inside her robe, moving it against her breast, a technique that had worked for everyone before him. It worked this time too, but this time was different, because his hand was shaking and his breath was catching." Okay, and this was page 82, goes on to page 83. "Then she sat up, remembering the tea she needed to drink to guard against pregnancy. Had sex with one of her parents' guards. She still didn't know the guard's name. Was that normal? 11-year-olds. We're giving this to 11-year-olds in our schools." She couldn't stop replaying, well, we don't need to read that one. "She took hold of his hand and put it inside her fur coat, thanking the cold for her hard nipples. She gave him a minute to touch her, kiss her throat. It wasn't terrible, actually, it was even a little exciting. You'll have sex with anything, won't you?" Page 222. "When he grabbed her, and he was grabbing her hard, manhandling her as he hadn't before, she couldn't push him off. He shoved her harder, pressing down on her shoulders. Get down," he said. This had better be a good screw." I mean, this just goes on and on. 11-year-olds. I would really expect to see a little more reaction as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Shay. I'm 21 years old, I'm getting married in May. I'm so glad that I'm not bringing a bunch of baggage into my marriage. I'm thankful that I never happened upon one of these despicable, shameful books in my school library. What I've learned about these books from this battle in Hillsborough County is that your hired librarians have chosen these books for students. Children. Books that contain more explicit sexual content than many adults even want to read. The friend group I am part of, the young people in my circles, we don't discuss this explicit content and definitely don't want to take part in it. In the age that Camden, Macy, Dax, their friends' age, there is no way I would have been able to handle these things at their age. And you need to know their names. My life might not look the same if I had been exposed, and my curiosity awakened that early. In my twenty-one years of life, I have not personally encountered hardly any of these types of situations in the real world, and I get sick being exposed to them in literature. I'm sick right now. I can't imagine teachers, librarians, or anyone in authority wanting to give this to children. If it can't be given to kids outside of school, which we know is a felony, it can't be on TV, it can't be in newspapers, if news stations cut away from the press conference video that DeSantis team created with images directly from the books, what on earth are you doing standing by while librarians dish this out to minors? How do you do nothing? How do you avert your eyes and ignore this? All these adults in the room are uncomfortable and sick hearing these things. So, what about the kids? The rate that we're hearing these things repeated in these meetings is the rate that these kids, by the thousands, are being exposed to them. If you've been silent on the issue, as I know most of you have, then you're responsible. But you are not ultimately accountable to me or these people in the room. You're accountable to God.
Thank you.
Well, I'm glad for my children to take part and to speak their minds about what's been going on here. I'm super proud of them. And I'm tempted to completely ditch what I had planned, because I, too, am just flabbergasted to see just the blank faces and, for two years, the lack of, the complete, almost complete, lack of response from most people on the board. I've heard, I've had a few private conversations, but none of them have gone anywhere, for the most part. I know that a couple of you are working. Well, again, this book is gay. Just for people who don't know, I need to say it again, because this was chosen by a middle school librarian, Pierce Middle School. You've heard about it today. Contains uncondemned pedophilia, five-step instructions for how to use the Sex Hookup app. This is a dangerous book to be putting in the hands of the wrong person, like middle school students. Their brains are not yet fully developed. Yet, the committee that reviewed the book challenge, containing the principal and librarian of the school unanimously decided to keep this book. Then, the district-wide committee, containing the supervisor of library media specialists K through twelve and K through five, the superintendent of teaching and learning, executive director of instructional support, executive director of literacy, supervisor of school counseling services, six through eight, supervisor of psych diagnostic services, these are the people running our district who also voted to keep this book in the schools. This is not the only book. This is the beginning. You have an opportunity, March twenty-eighth, I've heard, that you'll be deciding on this book as a district. I hope you'll do the right thing. This is ridiculous. Parents, please be aware. Go look at booklooks.org, and then compare those books with the content there. Booklooks.org. Compare with our Hillsborough County Virtual Library, and you will see for yourself. If you don't believe it, you don't believe all these people, go see it for yourself.
Good evening, Board. My name is Will Witt, and I'm here to read you an excerpt from a book called Lucky. "He started humping me again wildly. The base of my spine was crushed into the ground. Glass cut me on my back and behind. He kneeled back. 'Raise your legs,' he said. 'Spread them.' He put a hand on each calf and pressed them out farther than I could hold. Keep them there. He began to kneel his fist against the opening of my vagina, inserted his fingers into it three or four at a time. Something tore. I began to bleed there. I was wet now. It made him excited. He was intrigued, as he worked his whole fist up into my vagina and pumped it. He kicked me, and I curled into a ball. I want a blowjob. He held his dick in his hand. 'I've never done it before,' I said. 'I'm a virgin. Put it in your mouth.' I kneeled before him." Guys, seriously, would you ever read this to your own children? No? If you wouldn't read it to your own children, then why is this in the schools? If you were to take a book like this and go out onto the street and read it to children, you could be arrested for the pornographic imagery that is in this book. I call on all of you to do your job, which is to protect and to represent children. And if you do nothing, because there are no excuses, you are responsible for the sexualization of our children. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Debbie Hunt, Chair, Members, Superintendent. I bring to you a book called Prostitution and Sex Trafficking. And this is in two of our high schools. Just the clear title of it is in violation of 847-001, Harmful to Minors. And the information that is in here is damaging to them. On page sixty-four, "Pimps Having Even More Power Continue Threatening and Brutalizing the Women They Control." Buyers continue to abuse women, refuse to wear condoms, and spread the HIV virus and other sexually transmitted diseases to their wives and girlfriends. Stigmatized by identity cards and medical inspections, prostituted women are even more marginalized and tightly locked into the system of organized sexual exploitation, while the state, now an official party to the exploitation, has become the biggest pimp of all. On page one-hundred-and-fifteen, "Growing up in Chicago's South Side, Brenda Myers looked up to the prostitutes working outside her window. I asked my grandmother what those women were doing. She said, 'They take their panties off for money.' At age nine, this idea didn't strike Myers as odd. A family member had been molesting her for years, and she grew up understanding that her body would be the way she got by. I was thinking, 'Well, they're already taking my panties off, and I wasn't getting any money. So, I'll make them pay for it.'" Myers became mired in a cycle of dependency on drugs, alcohol, prostitution, and abusive relationships. There are another, a number of other pages in this book as well that are equally pornographic or damaging, harmful to children. But the thing that concerns me the most is where it came from, which is Gail Cengage Learning.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Antonio Anisi. I'll preface my comment by reminding you all of Florida Statute 847.012, which states in pertinent part, "A person may not knowingly sell, rent, or loan to a minor any book, pamphlet, or magazine, explicit and detailed verbal descriptions, or narrative accounts of sexual excitement or sexual conduct that is harmful to minors." With that being said, The Carnival at Bray by Jessie Ann Foley, this book is in nine high schools and youth services in Hillsborough County. "She could feel her nipples pucker and tighten in the salted wind. He began to suck them hard, and she grimaced, looking over his head. He found her warm opening and twisted two fingers inside. He pulled his hand from between her legs, and she heard the dull clinking of his belt buckle, the sharp exhale of his zipper being undone. 'Put your mouth on it,' he whispered. He put his hands on the back of her head and pushed her closer to his thighs, so she was nearly choking on it. To stop herself from vomiting, she spit it on the wet ground." How can five of seven of you sit here and tell all of us and every citizen in this county that this does not violate this criminal statute? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Yes, Anna Rivera from Brandon, retired teacher. I am going to read, if I have the chance, a page, some lines from this book, Lila. There are five of these books in the high schools in Hillsborough County, and it's rated seventeen-plus in the Miss Colleen Hoover Author website. And if you look at the cover of this book, you will say, "Oh, love can hound and heal." It's, oh, a lovely teenager's story. But not. There's a lot of sexual content in this book. All these pages that I just marked, they have a lot of content vocabulary. Before I have the chance to read anything, let me say something. For many generations, many generations, parents and grandparents were allowed, we were in charge of students' education. We are, still are, because you're delegated the authority. And we delegated the authority that we can remove from you guys. Okay? So, don't sit there very complacent and heads down because you don't like what you're hearing. Because this is what is going to happen. People is tired of this. We are all tired of this, and we don't want to hear it anymore. Okay? It's a shame and embarrassing that we have to read to parents in Espanol or in English, in English or in Spanish, the kind of words that we can see here, like in this one. I told her a few minutes ago, she was the best sex I ever had. I expected her to return the compliment, but she just smiled and said, "Oh, we always think that when we are in it." But it's just always the same thing when it comes around. But let me tell you, if flicking in my eyes is preparing students for a promiscuous life, that's why you have to change that. Preparing students for a promiscuous life. Sorry.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Laura Kissick. I am a mom of three in Hillsborough County. I'm here today to talk about two points, mainly about Florida Statute 847.012. And since many have already read it in full, I just want to zero in on the part that says any adult may not knowingly distribute. Knowingly is the key. Many of us have been reading from these books for the past year and a half, and you definitely know about it. This board has been provided with this information time and time again, and therefore knowingly providing porn to minors, as stated in 847.012, which is a third-degree felony. Interestingly, the only action Hillsborough County Schools has taken is to double down on providing porn to minors by keeping this book is gay on the shelf at Pierce Middle School. As a reminder, this is a book that provides middle schoolers instructions on how to use an online adult sex app, and tells students, quote, "Porn is fine and fun." They're telling twelve-year-olds that. Rather than simply remove the book for being against Florida law, the committee determined the book should remain because it has concepts that support the teen gay community. Supporting the teen gay community should not entail steering minors towards apps that are meant for adults, and can also set them up to lead to pedophiles and sex traffickers. This then leads to my second point. An attorney for the American Library Association is on record for saying, "Messaging regarding books that are sexually inappropriate for minors needs to be reframed as promoting diverse materials that are about inclusion and fairness." That is exactly the game played here at Pierce Middle School. In order to wash their hands clean of inappropriate sexual materials for minors, they repackage them as informative concepts to support the gay community. And voila, nothing to see here. Luckily, we have an army of concerned parents and community members who are wise to these games and are willing to continually speak out against these pornographic books for as long as it takes. We will not back down. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. And then, if we could have Speakers thirty-seven to forty-three to please line up against the wall. Thank you, thirty-seven to forty-three.
I'll be reading from Girl to Girl, which is in three Hillsborough High Schools, by Julie Ann Peters. "Two of them lunged at me, trapping my arms behind my back. They reeked of beer and weed and cigarettes. A sudden chill on my stomach made me gasp. They lifted up my shirt. Oh, shit, look at that. His forehead touched my breastbone, and he said, 'There's something down there.' His hands pressed against both my breasts. Oh, yeah, I see cleavage. He inserted an index finger between me. Cut Face found the end of the bandage and spun me round and round as he unwrapped it. I tried to plant my feet, slap them off, kick, elbow, resist, whatever I could do, but they just kept spinning and spinning me. The wrap came free. Whoa, one said, 'Nice rack.' Another one went, 'Why would you want to cover up these pretty things? Rough hands squeezing me.' Someone pinched my nipple. I cried out, 'No, I thought, it isn't me. They're not my breasts. They're coming off. I can't feel this. I'm cool.' Cut Face tried to kiss me, but I twisted away. Gross, dude, you know you're kissing a guy. Oh, yeah? He grabbed my boobs, squeezed hard. He suctioned his lips onto mine. A hand slid between my legs. Whoa, ho. What have we here? Check it out. Cut Face unzipped my pants. We're just having a little fun here. You're the one who said you're bored with female shit. You're the one who wanted to go cruising and find us a cheap hoe. Man, you got your wish. I tried to move, run, but my pants were around my ankles." There's only so much room in our libraries. You're removing classics, classics, other books with valuable material about our common cultural heritage, all of us, our common cultural heritage. And instead, you're putting pornography in its place. This isn't acceptable. It needs to stop.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Maisha Powell. And I just want to start by saying that I've listened to a lot of these books, a lot of these excerpts, and as an adult, I'm uncomfortable. I am cringing in my seat, even at the wall. I'm just shuddering just at the thought of half of these images. So, I can't imagine what it's like for children to be exposed to this. So, the book that I'm reading from is Sloppy First, High School Can Be Messy by Megan McCafferty. This is in ten high schools. Let me start by reading one portion. It starts by saying, "Rob's recent claim to fame is that he celebrated an away victory by persuading a freshman cheerleader to hide under his Seagulls varsity jacket and suck him off in the backseat of the bus." That's page twenty-one. Another excerpt, page three-fifty-two, says, this is so uncomfortable. Goodness. "I was basically a born-again virgin, so in a way, I don't blame Blake for screwing Miranda. He was really horny." Again, this is material that is being read to teenagers. My understanding is that when you expose teenagers to pornography, young people to pornography early on, that they, not only are they hypersexualized, they're open to more STDs, there's a higher chance of abortion. There's a lot of things that this has an impact on. This is a trickle-down effect. So, I'm asking, what type of children or what type of people are you allowing to be released into society? Since right now, it might seem benign, but they will grow up. They will be grown, having already been exposed to all of this. And we have no idea the impact, that it's going to have, the lasting impact that it can have on us as a whole. So, I ask that these books be removed.
Thank you so much.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, Superintendent. Nice to see you guys all. To piggyback off the last speaker, you can already see the effects some of this, some of this is having on our whole society. You see the suicide. You see the STDs. You see the abortions. You see the devastated teenagers and young adults that don't know how to cope with life. So, how are we preparing our students? Are we preparing them with a true ability to cope with this society, with this world that they're living in? Or are we preparing them for suicide, for a dead end? My name is Sarah Williams. I'm a parent. In Hillsborough County, my kids are in the public schools, so they will be exposed to these things if you guys don't remove them. I fight very hard for them. I don't want them to be destroyed by this material. I have a book called Extremely Loud and Incredibly Close by Jonathan Safran Foer. It is in twenty-three high schools here, and one youth services in Hillsborough County. On page one-seventy-seven, "I would have done anything for him. Maybe that was my sickness. We made love in nothing places and turned the lights off. It felt like crying. We could not look at each other. It always, it always had to be from behind, like that first time. And I knew that he wasn't thinking of me." Me, page one-forty-five, "Me. I knew him. Horatio, a jerk of infinite stupidity, a most excellent masturbator in the second-floor boys' bathroom. I have proof. Also, he's dyslexic. Jimmy Snyder." Can't think of anything to say. Me. "Where's your ghibs, now your gambles, your songs? Jimmy Snyder. What are you talking about?" Me. Raises hands to scoreboard. "Suck a tash, my cocker spaniel, you fudging crevice, whole dip shitaki." Where's the education in that? "And she took my hand from her shoulder and pressed it between her legs. She didn't turn her head to the side. She didn't close her eyes. She stared at her hands between her legs."
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Despicable.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fred Rock. I'm a father and a grandfather, and the fact that I have to be here today is just appalling. I have excerpts to read, but I'm looking at faces. One particular one that I wished, from District 2, would pay attention to what's happening here. Whether she's interested, I don't know. Why am I calling her out? Because inactivity is causing problems all over the place. Long story short, your job is a lot easier.
Okay, okay, everyone. Here's the deal. This is public comment. It's a time for you to speak. The Board does not engage when you speak. We would respect the right for you to speak, but we also need to have you respect the Board. We don't need to call names, and we don't need to cheer and applaud while we're trying to speak. It interrupts everyone. We're here to listen. We want to hear from everyone, but we can't let this devolve into some sort of riot. So just please be respectful when you're speaking.
Thank you. Your job, the hard, heavy lifting is already done. The laws are in place. You have a governor that would support the enforcing of these laws. You have staff that have gone through the books that are in our libraries and pointed them out to you. You've got a roomful of people right now that are pointing each individual excerpt for you. I really don't know what else we, as the constituents here, need to do, to do the right thing. We need you to do the right thing, and I believe if you're paying attention, you will. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Terry Rock, and I am a product of the Hillsborough County School System. I can honestly say, till I opened this book, Crank by Ellen Hopkins, I'd never seen this kind of smut. And it's in 48 high schools and one middle school. This book is disgusting. I was an avid reader. I'm still an avid reader, but I just cannot believe what's in this book. Just a small amount. "Crank-eyed pistons firing full bore. Passions fire-crackered in tiny bursts. From the thigh to the belly button, oh, baby, I want you so bad. Bad to the bone. We laughed, but it wasn't a joke. Not for long. My shirt tore open. Wait. I've waited for weeks. Put up and shut up. Off came the shorts, down went his zipper. I realized I was in serious trouble. All scream. Go ahead. No one can hear but the skunks and the coyotes. Still, as I opened my mouth, he slapped his hand over it." Really? Really? Do we need to have this in our schools for our children to read? It's disgusting. Please do what's right. It's the law.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chairman Combs, members. And my name is Chris Coons, and I have five children in Riverview, and this is so uncomfortable for me. And I think of you all facing out and seeing us too, and I know it can't be comfortable either for you all. And so I am sorry. But I am very concerned about the education that my grandchildren are getting, and also this generation of children. You all saw the middle schoolers that came in and heard some of the speakers, and the book that I'm going to tell you about, this part I'm going to read, the main characters are a middle schooler, an older middle schooler, and a high schooler. It's from the book called Beautiful by Amy Reid. And if I had been in middle school and saw this picture, I would have been attracted to it. It would have called my attention, just because, you know, girls are self-conscious, they want to read it. So anyway, it is in five schools. This is from page 25. It says, "The walls are dripping because I am on acid. He is not yet on acid. The tab is still on his tongue, dissolving, tasting like a spit wad. I'm 13, and I'm on acid. He's 15, and he will be on acid soon. Then his tongue goes in my mouth, and this is nothing like a first kiss is supposed to be. And James's tongue is in my mouth, and it tastes like something dusty, small, darting around and hitting my teeth like it's looking for a way to get inside of me. A trap door, searching for something hidden and unlocked. My teeth open, and his tongue goes inside, and I try to keep up, but I have no idea what I'm doing, and I'm scared because it's just me and him. The sound of a zipper unzipping, and I'm wearing a white cotton bra that is not a bad-girl bra. He says, 'Is this a training bra?' I shrug as well."
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you all for letting us talk. I'm sorry to have to do this. It's very uncomfortable. I'll be reading from a book called Breathless. I want you to know that it's full of all kinds of great stuff. There are 13 copies, 13 schools, three checked out. I wanted to read you the warning, summary of concerns. The book contains obscene sexual activities, sexual nudity, controversial and social commentary, alternate sexualities, references to suicide, profanity, alcohol and drug use by minors. Shane is kissing me, and his hands are everywhere. Oh, yeah, I think there. That's good, even as I'm helping him unzip his jeans. And then we're kissing again, harder and harder, until I half expect him to inhale my tongue, my mouth, my entire face. And in the moment, I want him to, because of the way my body is pressing into his, wanting to feel more. Shane has his tongue in my ear, but I can still hear the music outside. Being hot is not what I'm known for, so I kiss him a while longer. Then he gives my underwear a tug, chasing the thoughts away. Shane's hands are snaking their way down, and suddenly there's something hard and damp against my thigh, and I shift a little so he can't slide it in. It always ends the same way, him coming into the air, or into his shirt, or onto himself, or against my leg. Shane is staring at me, and his eyes are rolling, and his breath is coming faster and faster, and he's humping my leg like a dog. So I maneuver my lower half away from him, and that's when he groans and explodes all over my inner thigh. And this is when I freak out a little bit, because I swear I can feel some of it dripping into me. I want to say that if you all think, and I know, I think there's a plan for you to look at a book, if you think that you're going to look at one and take it down, and we're going to be happy, I'm sorry, but we won't.
Thank you again. Next speaker. Thank you.
Thank you, Board, for allowing us to be here today. My name is Chris Beard. I'm reading from the book City of Heavenly Fire. There are 58 of these in the public schools of Hillsborough County, 58 of them, from kindergarten through high school. I'm going to read, "He went down on his knees on the powdery sand beach, laying her as gently as he could on top of the pile of their heaped clothes. She scrambled for purchase for a moment and then gave up, lying back and pulling him down on top of her, kissing him fiercely until he groaned and whispered, 'Clary, I can't. You have to tell me. I can't think.'" "It's okay," she whispered back. "It's okay. We don't have to stop. I want to." She kissed him, slow and hard. "I want to, if you do." "If I want to?" There was a wild edge to his soft laugh, can't you tell? And then he was kissing her again, sucking her lower lip into his mouth, kissing her throat and mouthing her collarbone as she ran her hands all over him, free in the knowledge that she could touch him as much as she liked, however she liked. She felt as if she were drawing him, her hands mapping his body, the scope of his back, flat stomach, the indentations above his hips, the muscles in his arms, as if, like a painting, he were coming to life under her hands. When his hands slid underneath her bra, she gasped at the sensation, then nodded at him when he froze, his eyes questioning." The current sexual education curriculum in Hillsborough and many other counties throughout our nation not only encourages sex, but provides information to include explicit pictures of variety of sexual activities with multiple relationship options. This is against the law.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And if I could have speakers 44 to 52 to please line up? Thank you.
Good evening, Board. My name is Vanessa Vasquez. I'm a Hillsborough resident and parent, and I stand here because it should trouble each and every one of you that one of our Hillsborough County School Board members was recently caught red-handed on camera in a secret meeting with the ambassador of the murderous Cuban Cuba is the number-one state sponsor of terrorism, according to our U.S. State Department. The fact that this meeting took place is reprehensible, and not only sends a terrible message to Americans and the world, but it also directly undermines our country's foreign policy position on one of our nation's most oldest foreign adversaries. This act by this school board member can be easily viewed as treasonous. Because she not only violated the United States Constitution, potentially, but also multiple federal laws. And just to name a few, Trading with the Enemy Act of 1917, the Logan Act, the Foreign Agents Registration Act, and the United States Embargo Against Cuba. And we're supposed to trust you with our children? Any type of perspective from the Cuban regime is not one that we value in the United States. And these values and ideals are threatened when local members of our Hillsborough County and any meet with foreign terrorist country members. So I am here standing to call for the resignation of Karen Perez.
Next speaker, please. Thank you. Next speaker.
Hello. I'm Teresa Miller, and I'm a life advocate for the community, and I speak for those who are unable to speak for themselves. And today I'm here speaking for those innocent children that are students in our schools. I saw your motto there, and your motto, "Preparing students for life." But these books, it seems as though you're preparing students for a life of pole dancing, human trafficking, and/or porn film stars. Parents in this community are going to be silent no more. That's why we're here today. As a Christian, I'm called to be God's messenger. What you choose to do with our message will be between you and God on Judgment Day. So the book, mine's a deluxe addition, More Happy Than Not, and this poor young boy has lost his dad, and apparently the answer to happiness and grieving is to have sex, both gay sex and straight sex. So in this book, it's, "Colin has lost both virginities. He got it on with his girl Syria when he was only 14, after she gave him a handjob under the bleachers in the gym. Then he let this guy blow him last year when he was vacationing in the Poconos. I shove him, he shoves me back. I tackle him against the wall, unbuttoning his shirt, and it's all condoms and awkward memories from there on." This page, the one paragraph, has the F-word 24 times in it, in that one column, or one paragraph. So basically, I don't need to read it. It just repeats the F-word several times. I really hope these aren't the books that you choose to read to your grandchildren at night. I used to check books out from my kids' libraries, and I would read them. None of these should be in the libraries for anyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name's Caleb Moyer. I'm going to read a small section from a book called Exit Here by Jason Myers. You can find this in Blake High School. "She straddles me. I slip her navy blue top off and squeeze her breasts. They're a lot bigger than they were when we were 15." She laughs, and takes a huge pull from the bottle and leans down and starts kissing me. Jim Beam runs everywhere, down my chin, over the sides of my face, all over my chest, and right before I close my mouth, Laura spits some more booze into it, and I swallow it. "I want you inside me," she moans. "Get inside me, Travis." I sit up and put my hands on the sides of her waist and roll her over, pinning her back against the cool surface of the slide. Then I unbutton my jeans and push them down. Laura does the same with hers, and she wraps her hand around my dick and begins massaging it. I lean closer to her, planting my hands above her shoulders, and we rub the tips of our tongues together. Spit in my mouth, she says. I draw a glob of saliva to the front of my mouth and drop it into hers. Awesome. She swallows. Now bleep me. I push her legs further apart and rub the tip of my penis around her vagina until she grabs the back of my neck, pulling me closer. Go ahead, Travis. I slip myself inside her and start thrusting as hard as I can, our skin going smack, smack, smack. Digging her nails into my back, Laura goes, 'I want you inside me. Do not pull out.'" Okay. We bleep for like half an hour, until I can hold it no more and come inside her. I give this to a 15-year-old, I get arrested. You put it in the school library, and, oh, forward-thinking, it's so brave. That's nonsense. And don't give this lame excuse of all the bureaucracy, "It takes time to get these books." No. We are not a nation of laws, and we never have been. We're a nation of political will, and we always will be. If you cared about the children, you'd be drafting this stuff tonight to make sure that first thing tomorrow morning, you can start physically removing all of this nonsense.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Wanda Torres, and I'll be reading from a lovely, respectful book called Ready or Not by Meg Cabot, which is actually found in 10 middle and high schools. Says, "Come on, David said, his hand creeping up my shirt. Say yes. No fair. He's using his extremely talented fingers to manipulate my emotions, or not my emotions, more like my appendages. I would just like to know that it is very hard to know what's right to say, and it is when a guy has his hand up your bra. I'll come," I heard myself whisper. She was probably, that was on page, sorry, that was on page 51. Now on page 61, it says, "She's probably psychologically scarred from the guy whipping it out right and left in front of her." Ew, you saw a skanky model's penis before you saw your own boyfriend's? So if people, I'm an avid reader, and if people want to read this content on their own, by all means, that is their right. However, it has no business in your schools where a fourth of your students are reading below level.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Carmen Edmonds. Thank you for having us today. I'm reading from Last Night at the Telegraph Club. There's 21 books in the middle and high school. And just so you're aware, as I start reading this, this was rated a four out of five, not for minors, but it is in middle schools and high schools, and most of those kids are minors. And then one of the people kind of talking about this book is giving it just praise for a teen book, but it's obviously not written for teens, and that's a problem. Kath hesitated. "Are you sure?" she whispered. "Please," Lily said, overcome. So Kath put her hand between Lily's legs, and Lily helped her, fumbling with her underwear. It was awkward, but when Kath's fingers touched her, they both gasped. "Am I in the right place?" Kath asked. "Yes," Lily whispered. It all felt like the right place. Kath's fingers rubbed and rubbed, and it was so marvelous, so intoxicating. She'd never really touched herself like this before, and now she was pinned against the side of the filing cabinet, and it made a dull metallic thud as her hand slapped against it. "I'm sorry," she gasped, but she couldn't really be sorry because it was all happening so quickly, so unexpectedly. And she clutched Kath close to her as the sensations took over her body, shuddering as she pressed her face into Kath's neck. There was a minute in which she breathed in and out, in and out, and it goes on and on. And so it's just very, there's more, but I don't want to read that. It's just explicit conversations and written word about what is totally against the Florida state statute that these people have been, we've already gone over it. These are in violation of Florida state statute of what they're describing in these books, and we have this in middle schools. And you all know, you all are in education. I'm sure you've had workshops on human trafficking, what leads kids to human trafficking and being vulnerable and victims, and this is it. They're being groomed, and they're being groomed within the walls of our Hillsborough County schools. This is unacceptable. It's inappropriate, and it's just, it's heart-wrenching to know what children go through when they are trafficked. The cartels and the traffickers know this. They are commodity that's used over and over, and they make money off of them. More and...
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Lee Hardin. I'm the executive director of County Citizens Defending Freedom in Hillsborough County. Each of the books you've heard, read from today meet the legal description of obscene and harmful to minors. They have no serious literary value. This board has a legal, a constitutional duty to protect our children, and that has not been happening. Your continued failure to do this makes you legally, criminally liable for providing this information to children. Some of you have even publicly conflated removing pornography from our school libraries with quote-unquote "book banning." The audacity. Stop misleading the public. Do your duty and remove the books. Saying that these books have serious literary value would be like saying, reading Penthouse, you're reading Penthouse for the, for the good articles. It's not credible. Some of you have consistently stated that your constituents need this information for your children. They do not, and that is insulting and misrepresenting of your constituents. We're going to continue to fight this abuse of children, and we are either going to have these books removed, or we will have the five board members who continue to promote this information removed.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Thank you.
Mr. Davis, School Board. My name is Sharon Brown. I'm here on behalf of my daughter Melanie Copeland. She was featured in an article in the Tampa Bay Times about a teacher calling her a mutt because she's biracial. If any of you read this article and weren't personally devastated by the fact that this teacher is still in a school that two of my children currently attend, you don't deserve to be on this board. He didn't just call her a mutt. He harassed her for days, weeks, months, until I pulled her out at the end of her sophomore year. Every time I found out about an incident, I reported this to the school. Phone calls, emails, even showing up in person. I was told every single time that this was being investigated. Six years now, we have not had any response from the school or district, and we have found out that Melanie's report is missing. There is either zero accountability by the school, oversight by this board. There is no reason that a student goes to an office to report a teacher. Their parents show up, and it's missing. He's going to return to the school based off of reports my children, who are currently there, tomorrow, where he will torment additional kids. I'm not going to stop until somebody's held accountable, whether that's him or any of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Bobby Ewing. I live here in Hillsborough County, and I'm an organizer with the Party for Socialism and Liberation. And I'm here today to defend trans and queer people and to stand against the attacks from the far right against our schools and against the LGBT community. Today, right, as you can see, right-wingers have traveled here from all around the country to try and convince you to ban books. And I could stand here and talk about how sex education is a vital part of education, or about how kids are able to learn about sex without being harmed by it, but that's not what this is about. This is a thinly veiled attack on queer people. Across the country, the far right has unleashed a torrent of attacks on transgender rights with the goal of pushing trans people further into the margins of US society. Their goal is to make it impossible for trans people to openly exist, and they're not going to stop with trans people. They don't want to teach about the history of racism in this country. They're trying to destroy unions and public schools with bills like SB 256, HB 1, and HB 999, and they've already successfully rolled back the right to an abortion for millions of women around the country. This is all part of a larger right-wing campaign to dismantle every right that the working class and oppressed people in this country have fought for and won throughout history. The Santas and the reactionary anti-democratic campaign of the right wing is deeply unpopular, and they can only succeed by suppressing poor and black voters, repressing dissent, and intimidating those who would oppose them, like at USF, where the police violently attacked and arrested students who were protesting peacefully to ask the administration to defend DEI programs on their campus. We can't let these intimidation tactics prevent working class and oppressed people from continuing to organize and fight back against the far right. Historically, this has been the only thing that has been proven to be able to combat the reactionary attacks against our rights. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker for today?
Hello, board members. My name is Anita Barnes. I'm a Hillsborough resident. I'm a mother, and I'm a grandmother, and I'm appalled. I'm really sick at the discussion today. I'm even more disturbed watching your faces. If you all think that you just get to put up with this and then go home, and it's going to blow over, I assure you, as parents, these concerned parents, we'll fight. We won't quit fighting. If we don't get accomplished, anything accomplished with you, we'll go beyond you. So you really need to stop and think about the consequences. I'm here to speak about a book, Half of a Yellow Sun by Chimamanda Adichie. This book's in three high schools. The summary, this book contains sexual activities including sexual assault, sexual nudity, profanity, derogatory terms, violence, controversial and inflammatory racial commentary. What about this has any value? What about this has anything whatsoever to do with the gay rights? Zip, zero, nothing. This is about destruction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That will commence public comment. We will go ahead and move into employee input, since it's so close to six o'clock. We'll now take employee input. Even though we hear from public at the beginning of the meeting, it is sometimes difficult for employees of our district to attend meetings at four. There are many ways for employees to make their voices heard, including through union representatives, emails, phone calls, one-on-one conversations, and public comment at the beginning of the meeting. The board wants to hear from you. With this section of our agenda, we are creating another avenue for employees to speak to the board. We're setting aside 30 minutes for employees of the district to speak to the board about any issues that are on your mind. This is not intended to be a discussion about specific agenda items on tonight's agenda, but rather an opportunity for you to speak to the board about any issues related to your job or district. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. I'll now call up the first speaker.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Rob Creed, President of CTA. It's clear tonight that we have many, many issues in public education in Florida, and we are ground zero here in Hillsborough County, and more and more problems and issues are coming every day out of Tallahassee. So I beseech upon you the ability to find compromise with us in getting some conclusion to the contract status that we're at. I'm frustrated and angry that we do not have an answer from a magistrate. Collectively, we've gotten ourselves here. Collectively, we can get ourselves out. So frankly, I know many of you, and Member Rendon, I look forward to getting to know you better, and I appreciate all of the things that you're saying and doing here as a board member. I know Mr. Davis, and I know where all your hearts are in the work that you want to do in our public schools. The first step is solving the issue that we have with our contract and give the employees the two steps that they deserve. Let's not wait on this guy any longer. I cannot tell you the frustration level that I'm feeling, that you're feeling, that every employee in this district is, but I ask that you guys have an executive session and figure this out, and then let's sit down and talk it out, and let's get this done. Thank you for everything you're doing, and I understand that we have a lot of work to do for our public schools, for our students going forward together. So thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I'm a math teacher at Riverview High School. This is my 20th year, so I wanted to thank you for the 10-year service pen, as well as the 17 years of salaries paid that you're paying me. In this district, we have teachers that cannot afford to buy or rent in the communities they serve. I'll come back to that in a minute. While we are short teachers in all areas, math and science are two core subjects that have a critical shortage. This board has spoken directly about the mental health of its employees. Lynn Gray even said teachers should take time for their mental health. And Karen Perez is definitely an advocate for mental health for not only the employees, but the students. However, when a teacher does that, they're questioned on why they're taking days off, days off that they earned through their years of service. Surely, that's not good for their mental health. One of my dear friends had to take off the remainder of this year and will likely not be returning because this job has destroyed them. They were an excellent teacher who reached through to all students. You keep demanding more and more from teachers and giving them less and less while refusing to pay them what you already agreed to. Teachers are struggling to make ends meet, and you refuse to pay them what you already agreed to. You give them meaningless service pens as if that helps. Many teachers felt this was a slap in the face. It's like a corporation making billions in profits and offering their employees a pizza party. All of this while you say teachers' mental health is important. Teachers are getting frustrated, waiting on the decision from the magistrate regarding negotiations. You can end this now. You don't need to wait. All you need to do is pay us what was already agreed to.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. This is the first time I've read not from a piece of paper or script, because actually I was on my way home. And I started thinking about these conversations I've had today and in previous days, and also a little bit of my Facebook memories. Three years ago, people were clam, they were just like, "Oh, teachers are the best, educators are the best, we deserve to be paid. Oh, y'all, I've been home for two weeks with my kids, you deserve to be paid a lot of money. This is our respect." And now, we're being told that teachers are going to be basically subject to third-degree felony if they have a book on their shelf that's been there, by the way, for probably a number of years, but suddenly is a problem. We're also not getting paid. I have been in this district for 10 years. As you can see, my pin is on me mainly because it reminds me that I still have a fight to fight. As a counselor, I am required to have a master's degree in order to hold my position in the state of Florida. I am not compensated for that. No counselor is. That's a problem. We have 55 counselor vacancies in this district, most of them in elementary. That is where all of your identification happens, that's where all this stuff happens. Mental health is important, but we are losing counselors and we're losing good employees by the, I mean, in droves. And this can be solved. And this, yeah, everybody's going to go, this is a national problem, oh, this is a state problem. It's a Hillsborough County problem that we have right now that is in crisis, and it's getting worse. People aren't coming back. And so when this kind of good faith stuff happens, when we get our two steps of pay, it's just good faith. It's not going to stop everybody from leaving education, it's not going to stop the state from making horrible, horrible legislation. But it will show its fate that you actually believe in us, and that you believe in us more than just saying, "Oh, you guys are so important." That's all I ask of you, is to really consider this, because you will continue to have shortages, you will continue to have class sizes of 35 to 40 kids in a classroom that does not hold 35 to 40 desks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening, Superintendent Davis and School Board. My name is Susan Flaws, and I teach math. I'm the current Teacher of the Year at Durant High School. I'm rated highly effective, and my geometry honors students ended last year with a 99% pass rate on the state EOC. I say this not to brag, but to let you know that I'm doing the job for which I was hired. In order to do that, to plan lessons, to teach those lessons six times a day, to reflect on and evaluate their effectiveness, to prepare and assess meaningful daily assignments utilizing technology, to differentiate the assignments for students with varying exceptionalities, to write and grade 166 tests and quizzes, of which there is at least one per week, to plan for and meet with my PLC twice a month, to communicate with parents. In order to do all that, and to be honest, much more, I work at least a 50-hour week, some weeks 50 to 60, 55 to 60 hours. That kind of work week is not an aberration. All my coworkers put in those kind of hours. We get up early to reply to emails, to add final touches to lessons before we even leave our homes. We stay after school to reply to more emails, to set up for the next day, and to complete the myriad requests for information from caseworkers and administrators. We work evenings and weekends to grade papers so our students have meaningful and timely feedback. My point is, we do our jobs with fidelity. We're professionals, and we're dedicated, but we're demoralized. According to the published salary schedules for the 2223 school year, our pay levels are based on, and I quote, "completed years of creditable teaching experience." Funny thing, I've been on the same level for the past three years, E20. So all my hard work earns me no credit. That's demoralizing. I'm not asking for a pay raise, although a cost-of-living adjustment would be nice. What I am asking for is to be on the level that I deserve, that I've legitimately earned, which carries with it pay commensurate with that level. As I listen to my colleagues with families, as they share struggles with work-life balance, with paying for necessities which continue to rise in price, I'm filled with a sense of fear, even to be dramatic, doom for our district. I fear that we'll lose many highly qualified teachers to other professions that offer more money, better work-life balance, and perhaps more respect in the honoring of employment documents. Please do what is right for your teachers by paying us what is due us. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Krista Denica from Gaither High School. I almost didn't make it here because I was in a PLC meeting until about 5:00, trying to figure out this last chapter in my Algebra II class. So I don't know how to follow that up very well, but she did amazing. But I want to kind of continue on with what she was saying in the fact that in my department, and I don't want to out them, but I know of three people who are either actively in courses so they can get out of education, or that are going to be taking the summer to get out of education. And then I know of at least one other that is looking for things maybe in education, but outside of the classroom, outside of Hillsborough County. We don't have that big of a math department. I think we have 10 or 11 people in there. So you're talking about, about 40% of the teachers that are there, highly effective teachers, that are choosing that this isn't the way to go anymore. The big part is the pay. We should not have to guess what our pay is going to be. It should be met automatically. In fact, what we should be arguing about is maybe if there's, should be a COLA. We should be arguing about whether there should be a bonus assigned to us. That's what we should be doing, because we're still here, and so many aren't. But we're not. We're saying, make us whole, make us what we deserve, and we're still fighting this. I want to know, or I want you to know as well, that of those three, I will out myself. I am planning on taking the summer to take whatever courses that I need to and leave, because there is, I don't see another 14 years of this. I also want to point out that in, for me personally, I have something like nine weeks of sick time built up. That's after taking three pregnant, being pregnant three times and taking maternity leave. I have nine weeks built up. That tells you just how dedicated, admittedly, probably wrongly, but admittedly, you know, I'm, I'm here. I'm in my classroom every single day. I take so few days off because I don't want to be behind. And if I'm taking that so seriously, why am I and my pay not being taken seriously to follow suit with that? In fact, what we should be arguing about is maybe if there should be a COLA. We should be arguing about whether there should be a bonus assigned to us. That's what we should be doing, because we're still here, and so many aren't. But we're not. We're saying, "Make us whole. Make us what we deserve." And we're still fighting this. I want to know, or I want you to know as well, that of those three, I will out myself. I am planning on taking the summer to take whatever courses that I need to and leave, because there is, I don't see another 14 years of this. I also want to point out that in, for me personally, I have something like nine weeks of sick time built up. That's after taking three pregnant, being pregnant three times and taking maternity leave. I have nine weeks built up. That tells you just how dedicated, admittedly, probably wrongly, but admittedly, you know, I'm here. I'm in my classroom every single day. I take so few days off because I don't want to be behind. And if I'm taking that so seriously, why am I and my pay not being taken seriously to follow suit with that? I just, I hope that we're done. I hope that you guys get it together and decide that we're worth it, because we are. Thanks.
Thank you. And that concludes our employee input. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I need a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Member Washington. I have a second by Member Vaughn. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. The consent agenda has been approved. The following items will now be heard. C-101, C-102, C-601, C-701, C-1101. 101, purchasely of previously adopted instructional materials for elementary social studies for gap year 2023 to 2024. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. I'd like to lump 101 and 102 together, if we possibly can. They're both linked to adopting instructional materials for social studies for elementary and also the same token for middle school and high school. Back in 2018, we adopted a process of elementary social studies from 2018, which ended on June 30th of 2022. We came to the board once again and asked the board for a gap year for us to be able to recognize that the state was going through brand-new standards, to adopt brand-new standards. It didn't make sense to be able to adopt new materials in both secondary, I mean, both secondary and elementary with new standards coming on board. So, bringing the board and asking the board for a one-year pause to roll over and extend the current adoption process to an additional year to be able to use the current curriculum within our schools and adjust and buy all the materials necessary. Once again, we're in a process where the state is timeline. They have yet to be able to identify the new adopted materials related to social studies for elementary and also through secondary. So, coming to the board and asking the board for, once again, another delay in that process. As we see that, once the Board of Education selects new materials, that could be from April, that could be to May, that could be in June. And then, once again, we're kind of facing an issue that we have with STEMScouts and mathematics, which a number of those materials were challenged for their vendors. And that put us back to not being able to have the materials through half of a year, or sometimes more, to be able to give our teachers what they need to be successful. So, being able to use, once again, an extension of a gap year to allow us to make certain that we have materials that are going to be thoroughly vetted through Department of Education, thoroughly vetted through our school district, and extending that process so we can start, once again, for 2425 process to be able to implement. We'll be using $1.3 million of instructional materials categorically to be able to adopt or purchase any gap year needed materials for elementary. And also, for secondary, we'll be using $573,000 for this process. So, bringing to the board to make certain we can purchase consumables and also have digital access for both of those grade bands to be able to implement as we move forward.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. I need a motion and a second to approve items C-101 and C-102. I have a motion by Member Washington. I have a second. Do I have a second? Anyone? By Member Rendon and then Vaughn. Thank you both. Member Vaughn and Member Rendon pulled this item, so we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start with Member Rendon.
Thank you. So, I spoke in great detail about this, because I was a little bit confused. So, I appreciate the, all of the information behind it. After I've kind of understand the reasoning behind it, I just want to clarify, especially with some of the challenges that we had with our book adoption, getting our support staff and our teachers what they needed for this school year. If we do this, then there's not going to be any issues with materials at the beginning of the year for our teachers to make sure that they have what they need. That's why we're being proactive and spending this extra money to make sure that we have the materials ready to go by next year. There's not going to be any problem with the manufacturers. There's not going to be any backlog on this. Have we written something in this contract to make sure that our teachers are going to have what they need?
Through the chair, I cannot guarantee that all the materials will be here on time. I can tell you that if we wait and we wait for what the release may be, April, May, or June, for what may come out from the Department of Education, I can guarantee that we'll not be here for the start of school year. However, all the consumables that should be readily available that we purchased in 2018, in 2017 for secondary, 2018 for elementary, should be readily handable for us to be able to assume and be able to transition during the summer for the start of school. We don't forecast there being major issues with this. The good thing is, is that all of our teachers have the teacher additions. They know what they teach. They know the, they have curriculum guides to be able to fill any potential gaps. All we're doing is just getting the consumables for our students, and we already have digital access. We're just repurchasing the digital access for our students as well.
So, we've already narrowed down and made it clear the timeline with the publishers who we're purchasing this from.
Through the chair.
Is there any repercussion if they can't meet that timeline?
Yes, ma'am. So, there is a state contract, and there are liquidated damages provisions in that contract in the event that we do not receive those materials. And it is by day in terms of liquidated damages. This is our best option to get materials in our schools by day one. Our flawless opening is to try to have all materials in schools by day one. To the superintendent's point, if we go for the new adoption, we pretty much guarantee that we will not have those materials by day one with supply chain issues, truck driver shortages, all of those things that we know that we face. We're trying to be as proactive by going through a gap year extension here.
So, per the contract, we're expecting them before the school year. If we don't get them in time, there is liability for that, where monetary expenses can be recouped per the state with this contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Mr. O'Connor, and your team for meeting with me. You know, I read over a lot of material. And so, you know, you addressed several of my concerns. I also spoke with the DOE. I did verify with the Department of Education that they are not prepared to release what the list of approved curriculum is until at least the end of April or beginning of May. So, at this point in time, we do need to maintain our current curriculum in order to have social studies material. However, with that being said, Superintendent, I would like a commitment from the district that we're going to make sure that we're going to compare this current curriculum to the new standards when they are out in May and have workshops for our staff over the summer to make sure we're going to be meeting the state standards when we implement the curriculum.
Yes, ma'am, the chair. Absolutely, we will. We will make certain that everything's aligned. You know, as we know, when we buy any kind of basil, any kind of curriculum, there's going to be opportunities for us to make certain it lines to new standards, revise standards. That all is linked to professional development, of what can be taught, what should be taught, and what should be in front of our kids consistently. We'll make sure that's a priority for us.
The other thing I want to make sure that we are addressing is that we are going to be ordering the material that was approved by this board in 2018. We're not going to be getting new material, because what I have learned is that on the, our soft material, on the online material, there are times in which they do make provisions and they do make changes to that. And so, I want to make sure that the material that we're getting, and there has been changes so that you know, board, to that online material since we have approved it in 2018, that we were not aware of, that we did not approve. So, we want to make sure that, at this time, we order material that was previously approved so that we can make sure we, you know, we marriage that to the standards and that we make sure that we have a relationship with the vendors that when they do anything online, any of those changes, that we're communicated.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. I think that one thing for, we will be adopting and continuing for secondary what was adopted in 2017 and for elementary 2018. Any updates related to vendors or what they're making to any of their content, whether it be from a digital perspective or whether it be in print, that all has to be approved by the Department of Education. They can only change elements that are typographical errors that are found in their instructional materials. Anything that, any errors of facts, all that should be corrected by the publisher, and that all has to be synced and locked in. And from us, we'll continue to make certain that, you know, we've had these number of vendors, whether it be HGH, or whether it be McGraw, or Teacher Curriculum Institute and Pearson. We have good relationships with these individuals. So, we'll make certain, we'll continue to have collaboration to make certain that they're aligned with standards so we can be consistently in front of our children the right materials. Go ahead, sir.
Through the chair. Just want to make sure, so there's no confusion. We will be bringing forward next month the adoption for civics. And the reason we're doing that particular subject area is because new standards will be in place beginning the 2324 school year. So, instead of having to revise our current curriculum to the new standards and then redo that work again once we do adopt, we decided that it's best to move forward with that particular subject area for the adoption. But we have already prepared our supervisors to communicate with our teachers that we don't anticipate that those materials will be in place by day one. So, we already have a game plan to use the current materials until the new materials arrive. So, you will be seeing that coming forth, along with some AP courses as well.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Connor? Member Rendon?
Yeah, like I said, my main thing is I want to make sure that we are going to vet the current curriculum that we're going to be implementing with the new standards that are going into effect, and we'll be training our staff through workshops on that and guarantee. Because I think that's critically important, that as a district, we are maintaining and following the law, which means that we are following the standards, because by doing this, there are standards that will change, and we are approving a curriculum that may or may not be part of the standards. So, we must have a way in which we're going to be following the law.
Yes, ma'am. And as I said before, this is where our curriculum guides and our supplemental materials really come in to be able to fill any potential gaps that we see. Any basil, as I said, that we adopt, any textbook, we know that there's going to be opportunities to fill. And we'll make sure we diligently go through that process and make sure ongoing professional development's aligned to standards and our curriculum guides map out a year at a glance of what enduring knowledge, essential vocabulary, coherence learning, and rigor that's engaged in that process.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Hahn?
Thank you, Member Combs. The material adoption list that's going to come out in May, that's for the 2425 school year? So, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. It's for the 2324 school year. It could come out to be able to implement. The issues or concern is being able to, when it comes out, there's going to be particular potential challenges, as the way math came out, and then math books had to be pulled back. And so, our issue is that not only is there, it could be a potential challenge process as the vendor, as the content is pushed out, but also being able to get that in particular time for us to be able to cover and use that material at the beginning of the year.
I was going to say, what if this book isn't on that list and we purchased it?
Well, this has already been approved by the state, these contents in 2018, 2017.
Okay, so the new list is coming out in May, and so, but that is, it says... I'm looking at the last sentence. "The selection and purchase of newly adopted social materials is expected to be completed for the 2425 school year." So, the list that's coming out in May is for 2324 and 2425?
Yes, correct. So, statute allows instructional material adoptions happen on a five-year cycle.
Right.
We will have the beginning of that cycle for social studies in 2324. Statutes also provide provisions that school districts have up to three years within that cycle to purchase for that. So, we're going to delay one of those years and purchase the second year.
Okay, and that's in line with all the, with the state?
Yes, ma'am.
We're not going to get dinged for that?
No, ma'am. We're actually, well, many school districts will probably follow this decision to this evening because of the contentious issues that may come alive, and also the inability to be able to get content in the hands of staff.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Member Hahn. And I just wanted to say thank you for being forward-thinking, Superintendent Davis and Mr. Connor. I know that today I was up in academic services, and I ended up, you know, seeing all the elementary, middle, and high school social studies supervisors. And, you know, many of them have been in the district for over 20 years. They're so professional. They know exactly what we're doing. So, obviously, we're going to always follow state statute, and it's going to align with our skills and our strategies and the curriculum. That's always happened. That's nothing new, and it will continue to happen. And we just have to have faith that our cabinet really knows what they're doing. And when I spoke to them and I talked to them about this plan, they thought how important it was to be able to carry this out and to make sure that we are, that we are prepared, that our students are prepared for the beginning of the year. And if there is that gap, they do have that curriculum. So, I just want to assure, like, the public, it's always happened. I can tell you, I taught social studies 30 years ago. We always aligned with the Department of Education law, the standards, you know, things, textbook adoptions. None of that is new. All of that has always been in place, and I just wanted to mention that. Thank you. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And really, this is, it's an important, it's a relevant question, because if you remember when we did the FSA standards, we delayed, we didn't preorder, so to speak. And then, we went through, and I know Pepe, Debbie Pepe remembers, we went through almost a semester with no books for the kids. And I can't, I think it was social studies, but there's a fine line. So, then we're jumping, now we're being proactive, which I think is a very, it's a very proper way, because the other way, the kids didn't have the learning materials. It was very frustrating. But it's a fair question. You know, you want, you want to have, you know, everything on the start line together. But I think I agree the proactive way right now, and it does matter that we are following the standards. Go ahead, Superintendent Davis. Oh, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Superintendent Davis.
Thank you. Member Gray, Superintendent Davis?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. And then you say that, we wholeheartedly agree with that. I mean, remember, this year's the baseline year for all of our assessments, and next year will be an accountability year at scale. So, being able to bring a curriculum mid-year will create major disruption and frustration through all, from families, teachers, educators, curriculum, and services to be able to support that. So, we appreciate the conversation and trust in this process.
It was, it was a big dilemma. I remember that. So, okay, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, board members. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. 601, budget amendments to the period ending in February 28th, 2023. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. This is budget amendment for the ending of February 28th and 23. We're going to transition to our CFO, Mrs. Johnson.
Given board member superintendent, we're going to have a brief presentation by Ms. Garcia on our month-end budget for February 28th, 2023.
So, for the end of, for the budget ending February as compared to the budget ending January, there was no overall changes. The budget really remained the same. The only changes were small amounts within categories. And at this point, we're... Oh, I'm sorry. Can you not... I'm sorry. So, at this point, we're still projecting a $210.3 million ending fund balance. This next slide compares our actuals to the end of February budget. We've received 74% of our revenue so far, and we've expended 60%. And if you look at column E, you can see that at the end of February, we actually had a $425.8 million ending fund balance. This slide kind of shows the progression of where we think our fund balance is going to be at the end of February. You can see we had 425.8. And the projected will keep going down until we have the 210.4. This does not include any one-time movements to ascertain, nor does it include the results of negotiations. As for the cash, you can also see the same thing. At the end of February, we had $415 million in cash, and we project at this point in time to end the year with $206.3 million in cash. And this last slide just compares the original projection, where we project we're going to have 210.3 to the end of February, which was $425.8 million in deemed fund balance. Any questions?
Thank you. I need a motion and a second to approve item C-701. I have a motion by Member Gray. I have a second by Member Washington. Member Vaughn, you pulled this item?
Thank you. I was just wondering, to date, how much money has been in the budget for our vacancies? Unfilled vacancies?
Well, that varies. When we build the budget, it started at $155 million. So, we are filling positions as we speak. So we are filling positions as we speak. So it can go up and down. So it's no clear calculation, but we feel as of today, we have around over $100 million that's in vacancies right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Superintendent Davis, Ms. Johnson, with the House Bill 1 and/or 202 affecting our amount of students. And I think we had a perspective on it that perhaps the first seven-day count, we won't have a clue, the first semester, let's just say we won't have a clue. But Superintendent Davis, do you think that by the second semester, where we're seeing the solicitations right now to parents to go to private and charter schools, think we will have an impact by the second semester for, from our public schools in the FTE?
So through the chair, right now, we're not seeing a big movement of students transitioning out of our, of our schools. We don't see it at this particular time in the second semester as we started in January. We can't forecast what will happen and as the summer comes and there's additional cedings for whether it be homeschool incentives, whether it be private school institutional financing. What we do know that from our perspective is that we just have to continue to build a budget on what our forecast will be. And then we'll have to make adjustments after that first calculation. I think what we have to do is really continue, and I think it was so important the other day, we had a conversation about boundaries, is really focus on us and not focus on everyone else. If we focus on us from an academic perspective of what we're offering for attractors, if we focus on doubling down to make certain that we have high, you know, a high dosage of high-quality teaching, a high dosage of high expectations, a high dosage of students taking, demonstrating understanding and taking ownership of their learning, then I think we're going to be okay. I think we also have to do, continue to focus on what we offer from our extracurricular activities. It is so important for our children, our families, to be a part of the holistic community and have pride in our schools. I think if we do those things, then we, that will take care and bring our children back to us. But we've got to have, and Ms. Rendon talks about it all the time, about, just giving you an example of athletics, and every other board member talks about what we expand for the visual performing arts. If we continue to offer pathways in CTE and address great exposure for our children, they will select us and we focus on us, I think, will win in the, in the end.
So, and I thank you for that, and I certainly appreciate it. And our teachers are so very, very valuable, and they're doing a great job, as our administrators are as well. I'm more of a pragmatist, and I would rather us be proactive. The analogy be, would be with the books, ordering the books. I think that when we look at a raise for the teachers, and when we look at boundary savings, which if we go with four, it's not as great as perhaps scenario four, I mean, scenario two. But when we look at the costs coming to us and the deficits perhaps happening with the FTE in 2024, 2023, 24, possibly 2024, the beginning, I wondered if you will still go out for a millage? Just again, for proactivity conversation.
Yes, ma'am. I think the biggest thing that we have to continue to, to lead in a way, and that's just all of us from a 360 accountability, everybody here, everybody in this, you know, in education, in this community, we have to lead in a way that where our community feels that they continue to trust us with how we're spending every dollar and every cent. But at the same token, though, we have to be able to understand that we're making really hard decisions that protect us financially and protect this organization to help children as well. So there's a balance in that process. I think that as we close this school year up and some very hard decisions that we'll make, we'll have a great temperature of, of where we are as an organization, where we are financially, as we get our last calculation coming in, and also being able to determine how much movement we've made with our community. I think that's all to be determined. From us as a, as a board, as we seek that, we always want to be able to put more in additional funding within, is that my time? Put additional funding into our, our teachers. And I appreciate them coming and creating that voice. But we also have to be able to make certain we're fiscal responsible, and we are following our active financial recovery plan in a sense to determine what our next steps may be. We're working that plan every single day. Ms. Johnson fully understands in her teams what I need, when I need, what we have to do for teachers. We have to really rethink how we pay every teacher with a salary schedule, every support staff in the salary schedule, and also administrators at the school level as well. All those three entities have to be being able to address, and we're in active conversations about how we do that sooner than later.
And last, thank you, Superintendent Davis. I just also want to say that Ms. Johnson and Ms. Garcia, your department's doing an excellent job. Your financial recovery plan is, it fits the need for sure. And, well, we all look forward to working with you and keeping those close calculations. Thank you very much, Superintendent Davis, for your response. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Member Gray. Member Rendon?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson and Ms. Gray, for all of what, I know you and the superintendent have worked very hard the last three, four years to really bring our budget up to an even keel and get out us under, from being under budget. I mean, I'm sorry, over budget. So, you know, as we look forward to, and Member Gray, as you spoke about the changes in the legislature, you know, one of the things that goes with House Bill 1 and Senate Bill 202 is a committee with the Department of Education and working to be able to release some of the constraints we have within the public school system. And so I think it's vitally important that the public be aware and that us members be aware that our voice is very important to the value of public education, to the value our teachers, our administrators, our coaches, our arts teachers all bring to the lives of our students and the future of our community. And so I think that along with giving families choice, which is critically important, because not all, every box fits for every child. So it's critically important that we do have choices within our education system for whatever that means, whether it's our magnet schools, whether it's our, you know, traditional schools, whether it's our charter schools, no matter what that is, we also have to look at that we're all on the same playing field. And so I think it's vitally important that we recognize that as part of those legislations comes some deregulating of our schools, giving us more opportunities to do that. The other thing I want to continue to advocate for is that we are constrained by some of our categoricals with some of our funding. In many areas, it was very critically important that these categoricals remain in place when they were built, so that school boards and school systems understood that these were priorities within our schools. But giving us that flexibility is going to be critically important as we move to the next phase of our budget and our critical needs of our district. But with all of that being said, we as a board are going to have to make very difficult choices in the near future. Our SIR dollars are going to run out, have vital programs that are meeting the needs of many of our students. We have many things that we want to do in a district. You know, even when we want to order textbooks, we have to think about that fiscal responsibility. Because when we have these vacancies of $100 million, that doesn't make our fund balance very big anymore. And so that's going to be critical when we have, you know, anything, something's new. Something's going to be shiny and something's new. A lot of people are going to try it. That doesn't mean the grass is always green or on the other side, but that's going to be a sacrifice we're going to have to look at in the next year. And so I just want to talk to our whole staff, our cabinet, our, our staff, and know that we have to prioritize our teachers, we have to prioritize our direct staff. They have to come first in everything we do moving forward. And so I think it's critically important as we think about our budget. I thank the superintendent and Mrs. Johnson for your department in making those sacrifices so far. But now it's up to us to look at those sacrifices, and it cannot affect our teachers, it cannot affect our direct support staff, it cannot affect our lunchroom staff, our custodial staff. It must affect us first and foremost. They are on the front lines, they have to be the priority in every decision we make.
Thank you, Member Rendon. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. Superintendent Davis, we're tracking, people have to register us when they homeschool, is that correct? They have to unenroll and give us their intention to homeschool?
Yes, ma'am, the chair. Everyone has the intention to homeschool. They have to send an intent form, and they will connect with their home education. And that, and that is processed with a parent and through our division.
And so we've had a lot of conversation about how this band, this HB1 is going to be an expansion for charter schools and for private schools. But what I haven't heard a lot of conversation is around that expansion to homeschool families. And while you said we haven't seen a lot of movement between private schools necessarily yet, or movement to magnet schools, what, about how many do we know parents already homeschool in our district? What are we looking at when we talk about monetizing families that homeschool?
Yes, ma'am, through the chair. I'll have to get that exact number for the board and put it in my follow-up. And I think the biggest thing, we haven't seen anything in the second semester because this legislation hasn't been finalized. But there will be opportunities for, for parents that are currently homeschooling or potentially homeschooling. And they'll be able to have a spending account of over $8,000 that will go to them to be able to help with that process. But we'll get that actual number for you.
And so I, I know, I don't want to spend a lot of time talking about it on this agenda item, because I don't want to hijack the budget amendment. What I would like to do is have some conversation going forward about that number, what that looks like. And just for myself, I'd like to also understand what the oversight on homeschool families look like. We have so much discussion even tonight when we're talking about what books are available, and so many parents are concerned about what's going on in our traditional public schools. I'm curious what kind of accountability or oversight, or how much we know what's happening in homeschools. Because, you know, I read a very disturbing article from Vice Magazine that in Ohio, there was a Nazi homeschool of over 3,500 kids. So I just want to understand if we're going to be funding public tax dollars to homeschool, what that looks like as far as accountability, since we have so much, when we talk about accountability with our tax dollars and this board and so much interest, I want to know what that looks like as this band, bill expands. Thank you.
Well, Member Vaughn, I, and Superintendent Davis, I have to say, my biggest fear also, and I'm going to get right into the audits. When we talk about school choice, this is just a broad statement. School choice is a great, it's a great avenue for parents to, of course, I know, I'm not, I'm going to go right back to the budget, Mr. Porter. It's a, it's a very important way to meet the child's needs, whatever they may be. But equally important is the financial oversight of not only us, but every charter, every private, every entity that entertains, taking care of children. And my only fear is, while we can go ahead and celebrate and have a regular holiday on school choice, we also have to remember that we're a school board, seventh largest in the country, and we have to be very adept in finding a, let's just say, making sure that we have their financial information as well, if we're calling it a public charter school. So I, I know that I used to ask for audits for many of the charter schools, and I did get them. But I think it's incumbent that we start getting that information. So there is a, a bit of oversight. And, and, you know, Chancy is not here, Dr. Deleng, but she's doing a great job sharing referrals, free and reduced lunch, minority, you know, demographics. That's important because it educates us. And if we want to be competitive, Superintendent Davis, then we can be more braggotious and say, this is the amount of, you know, this is our grades, this is the amount of certified teachers that we have in our schools versus some of the schools that we've entertained don't have that. So I think more and more, when we talk about accounting, I'd like to have more focus on those particular schools that are opening up, so we know what we're dealing with. Does that make sense, Ms. Johnson? You don't have to say yes, just because, yeah.
We do.
Yes, and Superintendent Davis, do you have a comment?
Yes, ma'am. And through the chair, we're, we're required as the, you know, the LEA to be able to make certain that every one of the charter schools are functioning, you know, financially, and that when they do not, we make certain that we address that immediately. Anytime that we have a red flag related to financials related to any school that's outside of district management school, we will engage them, look at a problem-solving action plan process, and we will also send any type of formal letters, and we'll share that, we continue to share that with the board. So there's great accountability for their, to make certain that they're fiscal responsible as well. But we'll continue to make certain that we are collaborating and competitive in the same spirit.
Well, I'm glad you said that. Thank you. I'll sleep better tonight. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Member Gray. I just had a, just a quick question, since we are talking about finances and things of that nature. Superintendent Davis, I asked you before, what does it look like with the magistrate? When will that be resolved? I think people are very, very frustrated. So what does that look like?
So first and foremost, I appreciate the patience of everyone. You know, we, we have, this has started, I believe, in October, and we are desperately waiting on an answer. And we're a couple weeks outside of what the requirements were. So we had worked with our legal team to, and worked with HC, with the Hillsborough Teacher Association, to be able to come together and send a joint communication off to this individual and ask them to please, say, you know what, where are we? Can we kind of have an update of what's going on? We have not heard back since we sent that communication out. You know, we hope that this individual is okay from a health perspective. If not, we'll connect with PERC as, as early as tomorrow to figure out what we can do to be able to expedite this. All sufficient information was submitted. We've been in collaboration with CTA in this process, and we desperately need it. I mean, because there's a lot of things that we need from a school district to make informed decisions, that we can go back and look at finances. But at the same token, we also need validation from a contractual perspective of what should be, you know, mandated or agreed upon every single year from the, from the step structure, just to give us, you know, clarity about where that process is. That's going to help everyone in this process move forward. But at the end of the day, we're, we're still waiting. We'll have a conversation with PERC, and we hope this individual is okay.
I guess my other question is, you know, months ago, when we talked about this, you know, when you, and I appreciate Member Rendon and, and all the comments from my other members, because there's no question, you know, the teachers and the staff, they're, they're at the forefront. So, oh, months ago, you said in April, you would look at it. Because when I look at so many vacancies that are unfilled, and I see people who are working, you know, covering classes and doing so much, and you said in April, you would have more clarity, even if we thought the magistrate would come back. What were we looking at now? What does that look like?
So through the chair, we're still waiting on that, the last calculation to come through from February. Once we have that information, it's going to be a better, better sense. We know kind of where we are projected to be, but we want to validate with that with hard numbers. And I've had conversation with this entire cabinet as early as today about what we can do. You know, we're doing a good job of hiring individuals. We're, we're not, and this is, and I know one of our educators said it's a national, it is legitimately, I was at the Council of Great City Schools this weekend, the retention has been horrible through everywhere. And we talked about strategies. And I talked about Ms. Johnson the last couple of days and talked about, we have got to make a splash financially with teachers. We've got to show them in some way, shape, or form that we, we are here for them, we care for them, and it pick us other than surrounding counties that do have other avenues. And is, you know, as late as today, right before this meeting, we met about potential models, what that looks like for you, for, for future. But at the end of the day, one thing we don't want to do is say, you know what, we're going to expand all of this vacancy money, because openly, we want to hire to make certain, for those individuals, to make certain those classrooms are smaller for our teachers. This year's, our, our teachers have been pressed against the wall every single day. But we're in a better spot every single day that we lead for making intentional movements financially. And I think this cabinet has done a really good job of leverage in every federal dollar that we can, Medicaid dollars that we can, to alleviate general funds, to be able to build up better funding that we can help with reoccurring costs, not only, you know, for support staff, but for teachers and administrators as well, administrators at the school-based, so.
Thank you. And just one last comment. As we move forward with that, I would hope that as we go through the year and we look at boundaries and repurposing schools, it would be nice if we could be very fiscally conservative, so that way, next year, when teachers are coming in the fall, that's already taken care of. Because am, am I right? If we repurpose a school that's surrounded by under-enrolled schools, you're looking at about $1 million of reoccurring cost for each site. Is that correct or not?
It's, it's close.
About, about 900,000?
Yeah, absolutely. Somewhere within that range, absolutely. And the biggest thing is, is that in, in my aspirations were this summer, but my aspirations are aggressively now to make certain that we close this year up and we start immediately to move for what next year will be, so that by the time teachers come back, it is over. The only thing that we have to address as an organization is any type of language in front of our staff that we want to look from a contractual perspective. We have got to get the finances done. They've got to be able to say before they come back that there is a sense of hope and value within Hillsborough County to keep them in front of our children. value within Hillsborough County to keep them in front of our children, especially as next year, we go into a big, giant accountability year. And we need, we need high-quality, high-dosis learning and teaching every single day. So we're committed to that process.
And I apologize for digressing, but it's important. You know, I was at Canella today. I see so many teachers, so many social workers working so hard, and, and everyone says the same thing when I walk out, like, "When is this contract going to be taken care of?" People are really very frustrated. So, um, thank you. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Superintendent, thank you for answering those questions, because those are some of the same questions I had on my mind. I just wanted to give a sign to Ms. Johnson and Ms. Garcia.
They're champions. They really are. They've done a really good job. A team of like three to four. They've done a really good job in a $4.3 billion budget inclusive investor. So I'm, I'm proud of them.
Thank you. Please vote when your lights appear. Should I say "thank them"? And it passes unanimously. Our last item, 701, approve the piggyback agreement, 23032 PGB LG Contract Labor Kitchen Equipment. Superintendent Davis will highlight this item.
Yes, ma'am. As, you know, as we move forward, we have to really look at all of our structures at our schools and, and really identify common areas that every one of our students interact with. One of those areas is our cafes. Every student within our organization, in our, in our community, they always go to the cafeteria, whether it be for breakfast or whether it be for lunch. And this is an opportunity for us to, you know, for us to look at remodeling, rebranding cafeterias in three schools. One being Chamberlain High School, Hillsborough High School, and Lopez Elementary School. And those three schools were identified because they haven't been touched, some of them since, you know, 1956. They have the old existing floor, old existing lines, old existing kitchen equipment. So this gives us an opportunity to start moving and addressing cafes within our, within our schools with new lines, new branding, new kitchen, new seats, new flooring, just a better flow in, within our schools. And this is just the start of it. And this allows us to leverage capital dollars to do so. But not only do we need to start moving to address cafeterias, but this is only cafeterias, but we've got to get to a point where we rethink the way our media centers are refreshed as well. So starting with cafeterias and also then transition to media, with our media centers, just allows us to be able to address some of the old, you know, outdated facilities that we currently have and better, have better flows within our schools.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. And I lied because there's one other item.
I know, it's all right.
I need a motion, a second, to approve item C 701. And I have a motion by Member Gray, and I have a second by Member Vaughn. Thank you. Member Vaughn, you pulled this item. Do you have any questions or comments?
I do, thank you. Um, I mean, as far as updating our, our cafeterias, I think that's vital, and I'm glad that we're prioritizing that. One, I just want to kind of state for the record that I would love to just see us have an opportunity to have some of these go out for bids locally, so we could employ local people and give them an opportunity for this, instead of continually piggybacking. I know that the thought process is it keeps it affordable, but I'm not even seeing if we're bidding, if there are people locally that have an opportunity to meet this price range, and again, employ people locally. So, you know, I would just like to see an opportunity, if, if we go out for a bid and we find something on a piggyback that's less expensive, then I can understand that. But to me, it just feels like we're jumping to a lot of piggybacks without even opening up that opportunity locally. So I wanted to have a conversation about that. As well as, you know, I have a lot of concerns in my district, I don't know if my fellow board members do, with the quality of lunches and food that's being served. And I guess what my question is, is if we're expanding the cafeterias to include these kitchen refrigerators, gas systems, is that going to allow us to offer? Oh, Siri heard that. Is that going to allow us to offer, you know, a, a different menu? You know, when I look at our budget, I see that consistently, you know, our, our food service budget is one of the highest budgets, and yet again, I get a lot of complaints about the quality. So will these revamps also allow us to look at our menus and the nutritional options that we're serving in our schools?
Through the chair, absolutely. This is one of the initiatives we want to be able to try to spearhead next year. I mean, one of the things we talked about is, is putting, you know, putting like a, a deli pub sub at, at, at our high schools and our secondary schools because of the, the excitement around that type of initiative. But being able to revamp it, remember, there's a lot of restraints about what we can purchase and what we cannot purchase. Some of those restraints have been lifted in the, in the last two years, but being able to get back with food services to redefine our menu, absolutely, we, we want to be able to do that. We want it to be most attractive that we can for our students, so they can be actively engaged and involved. Some of our students, as we know, that may not eat because they're, they, they don't like the, the offerings that we currently have. So just gives us that opportunity to be able to expand.
Aside from just feeding their tastes, we want to make sure we're giving them good nutritional value.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Hey, thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Hahn?
Thank you, Member Combs. I too am very happy that we're going to be doing a refresh. It is a priority. But I do have some questions about this particular piggyback. I also have concerns that it's not local. When you look at the 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 companies listed on here, most, three are from the North Florida area, Jacksonville and Yulee, one from Riverview, one local, the other from West Palm. So I am concerned about that. My concern though is also with the, and the price too, you know. Member Vaughn brought up a good point. You know, a lot of times when we ask about, "Why are we piggybacking?", and we often get the response, "Well, you know, we get a better price." I mean, this was approved in January of '23. I don't think they got a better price than what we're getting now. I could see if it was approved in January of '21, and, you know, I'd say, "Well, maybe the prices were a little better then." So the other piece is with the piggyback itself. One, this, the only thing that's been provided to us is a very bare skeleton agreement. If this is the agreement that the Duval School Board approved, wow, not a whole lot of meat on it. So here's my first concern. Article 1, ITB, Invitation to Bid. It says here, "The contracts will provide the district the services set forth in the invitation to bid." We weren't provided the ITB. I have no idea what services they're providing to us, nor do I know what they provided to Duval, which is not really my concern. I see that the prices on here, obviously, that was provided in Exhibit B. The renewal. This agreement is up for a four-year additional, one term, one-year terms. Four years of renewal. And then if you go to our cover sheet, it says that this agreement will be reviewed and evaluated annually and may be renewed by the superintendent per the terms of the specifications. So the superintendent will get to decide if this is renewed for the next four years. I've mentioned before, it's really been the preference of this board that we get to determine that, not the superintendent and his staff, that it would have to come back to this board per our financial concerns. And so that's really a non, another non-starter for me. The next piece is under Article 4. Again, this contract may be terminated as set forth in the ITB, yet we don't have the ITB. I don't know what the termination is for this contract. I'm a no on this contract at this time. I would prefer us to go out for our own IRB locally, and if not, I would prefer that you pull this and provide the material of the ITB, as well as a rationale as to why we need this piggybacked, and also with the change to the renewal at your discretion. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Hahn. Member Perez?
Thank you. I have a question. Why are we doing a piggyback when we have, can we not use our referendum money from the 2018 school improvement?
Through the chair, we're using capital funding. So, you know, for us is, we could use referendum money if it went through the referendum committee, but we do have capital to be able to, to use this process. One thing that we did, when we talk about Anderson, Anderson is the, the LLC that was, is moving forward, they will just manage this project. We will be using local providers and entities. I do think it's fair to be able to make certain that we have the invitation to bid. This is clearly inherent as a 30, as a 30-day termination clause, and as always, and, and I know it's in language, and we'll, and we'll strengthen that, that will make certain, I always bring it to the board, I do nothing in isolation related to being able to approve items, especially of this particular item. What we can do is, is we can bring this back, make certain that everyone has the invitation to bid, and make sure that there's clarity on the, there's clarity on the vendors that are actively involved, how we're going to use local vendors, and then make certain that we revise it, to make, the, the board will have final say related to what we do from an annual perspective.
That was going to be my point, because under the referendum money, I know that we have a, a, a group that already looks at the referendum money, and it's, you know, they look, they, they get the contracts, you know, locally. And, and that would be something to explore, especially providing the business to local businesses to provide this, this, you know, this impact to our schools. My fear is that if it's someone outside of Hillsborough County, I, I know that you're saying that it's a contract, you know, local labor, but local labor, if something happens, they're right here if we have, with the need for repairs or anything like that. But also, we're supporting our community here in Hillsborough County with the work.
And I want to say that Anderson is a leading agent in when it comes to being able to transform cafeterias. And they will, we will be using from a local perspective is, is using Horace, who's been a beautiful partner of us with, within, within our community. But openly, no problems with, with making the recommendation to pull this and bringing back stronger evidence and conversations during our one-on-ones to make sure we feel comfortable with this process.
Your request is to be pulled, right? So we, there's a motion on the floor to approve, so we're going to just have to have either the maker of the motion withdraw that. So Ms. Gray made the motion. If you'd be willing to withdraw your motion for approval. Yeah. So, so now there's no motion on the floor, I think the appropriate action would be for a board member to make a motion to continue this until the superintendent brings it back. And it looks like Dr. Hahn is poised to do that.
Thank you. I'd like to make an emotion for this to be pulled from the agenda today and revised with the IR, I, I'm sorry.
I think, I think Superintendent heard, I think it just, yeah. And he'll come back with his recommendation.
And, you know, um...
Yeah, if we could just have a, Ms. Vaughn seconded it, so.
Thank you. Okay, so now we know that the item is going to be pulled.
You need to vote on it, but yeah.
Okay, okay, we're going to go ahead and vote right now. If we'd like to go ahead and take this off, and then Superintendent will work on it and come, bring it back at another time. So please vote, if, vote yes if you'd like to have it pulled for another time. Okay, thank you. Spring break brain. And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much. So we're going to go ahead and pull that item, and now we're going to go to the last item, which is 1101, which is School Board of Hillsborough County versus Juul Labs. And Superintendent Davis will be highlighting this item.
Yes, ma'am, through the chair, I'm going to transition and pass this off to Mr. Porter.
Okay, actually, this is a good way to end the board meeting, members. This is a very good news item. In Jan, well, July 28th of 2020, which was before several of you were on the board, the board authorized participation in litigation against Juul Labs, which provides vaping and electronic cigarettes for students. And it was a nationwide effort, it was a class action lawsuit. The board opted in at no cost, and so there's been no cost to the district. The deal that was struck was that if a settlement was reached, the board would get a piece of that. And I'm happy to report that that's exactly what happened. The board, or the district will be receiving money based on the settlement. These are rough numbers, but we'll get it finalized, and it's, it's a good thing. You're going to be getting, the district will be getting approximately $7.7 million with the first payment due in December of 2023, and then three payments in each subsequent year. So the only action today is that you approve that. When we get all the final numbers, we'll certainly inform the board of that. The number is based on a formula, a size of the school, size of the district, the, the amount of time we participated. So again, there's been no cost to the district, but we're receiving $7.7 million from the settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. I need a motion, a second, to approve item C 1101. I have a motion by Member Gray. I have a second by Member Washington. Any discussion? Member Gray?
Well, no discussion. I just had a question. Where, what funds does this amount of money go to?
Even better, they're unrestricted.
Unrestricted. Well, this is, yeah, I mean, that was a good fight. Thank you, Mr. Gibson. No doubt you had a little bit of say-so or helpfulness, and thank you, Mr. Porter.
This is actually an outside law firm that did this?
And thank you, the outside, yeah, okay.
Mr. Gibson and I looked at it, but we hadn't, we can't take any credit for this, either one of us, so.
Well, thank you, the powers that be. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Please vote when your lights appear. And it passes unanimously. We will now move on to comments. Superintendent, we will start with you.
Yes, ma'am, to the chair, I only have one slide this evening.
Okay.
And openly, it's just to welcome everyone back. We have, maybe I have no slides tonight. Just welcome everyone back from spring break. We appreciate it. Uh, you know, I found that I personally re-energized, ready to come back, and the cabinet's like, "Dude, what's the matter? You're taking off this week, come back with a lot of stuff going on." But I'm ready, prepared to close the school year out, everyone is as well, and start planning for next year. But just want to thank everyone for, for their hard work and their continued dedication to our children. So thank this board for, for your continued leadership as well. We have hard decisions that we'll have to make, but we'll do it together. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Davis. Member Washington?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pablo, are you ready? We going to? I think I have something. Okay, let me, okay, good, I can see it. Okay, so on 3/11, this weekend passed, we had the weekend before the break, we had a hold for Tampa Community at Suffolk Springs Elementary School, and it was a kickoff, break, supporting families within our transformation network. And I want to tell you, we're very successful. We had over 1,000 families, about 50 vendors, and about nearly 200 volunteers. And it really worked well for Suffolk Springs area, because very few times we have opportunity to go in Suffolk Springs and, and give, and give to that particular area. So it really went great. And I want to thank you, Ms. Jay, Mike Wren, thank you for your transformation. You guys did a great job. Yes, ma'am. And yeah, Tracy, Tracy was there. That's right. We had a great time. You can see we were standing up, having some fun too, talking to people. And it was really nice, we enjoyed. And also, you know, I want to say, Fleda and, and them was out, yeah, yes, yes. The Face team were there, and you can see we had the NAACP, they were there, and we just had a great time and supporting the community, which was really good. And Ms. Perez, you was there, because I think we took a picture together, didn't you? You made me look good in that picture, I saw it. So it really went nice, and we enjoyed. Moving on, we also had, also on 3/13, I had opportunity to go and meet with Mrs. Doris Ross Reddick. She turned 96 years old. Very sharp. She still know about the school board, and she's a former school board member. And we had a great time celebrating her birthday. She, she wanted to know about the school system. She's still in with the school system, I tell you, and she's a wonderful person. And I just want to say congratulations to her for that 96th birthday celebration. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Washington. Member Perez? I was thinking, it's amazing she's 96, and that gives us hope that we can live that long and be on the board, right? Okay, Member Perez?
So I had the amazing privilege of spending my spring break up in Tali. And, and I had, my granddaughter went up with me, and she did the pager program up in Tallahassee. And, you know, that's an incredible program for our kids. You know, she, well, the fact that during spring break, she had to get up by 8 o'clock and be in, in, you know, in Tallahassee and working was incredible. She really didn't appreciate that too much for me, but hey. But she learned. She, you know, was able to work with the pagers and, and, you know, work on policy. You know, her little policy thing was chosen, and she got to defend it and work on it. And it was really amazing. And then she got to see everybody in chamber and how, you know, our representatives are up there fighting for our children on a daily basis. You know, luckily, they didn't really fight, but it almost got there. And also, I want to talk about my cyber task force. We met last month, and the educator who is, you know, working with me on that cyber task force, Bianca Goolsbee, she provided a presentation on AirDrop. AirDrop is a feature just on the Apple devices to wirelessly send the content to other Apple devices. And this has caused disturbances across the nation, and parents should be aware of it. Our next task force meeting will be April 3 at 6:30. And Mrs. Goolsbee will be sharing a presentation on ghost apps, on what parents should know about them. You know, our cyber task force has been going on since last year. And, you know, parents are starting to join and really talk about the Apple devices and all sort of computers and how they're learning how to block their children, you know, using some certain, certain apps on the phones. And it's been really an education forward, especially for me too, because of my grandchildren. And also, last but not least, I'm going to start a book club. You know, Member Vaughn, we have our children that, you know, literacy really matters. But when the parents are not avid readers, their children tend not to be readers themselves. So I'm going to be starting a book club for the parents. You know, while you read with the children, I'll be reading with the parents. The first meeting is going to be April 15 at 6:00 PM. It's going to be a Saturday night, you know, when we're able to meet. So please join me. I'm looking forward to reading with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Perez. Member Hahn, I think it goes great.
Look how the joy of reading of books is contagious. That makes me really happy. Congratulations, and I wish you the best of luck with that. I look forward to the updates. That's fantastic. So my comments are around books, too. So I have some questions, actually, that I'd like some clarification on, given the special call board meeting next week. One is, how many active book challenges have been filed with the school district to date? Do we have a number on that by any chance?
Do we have that? Ms. Connor?
I think we are at currently two, with the one that's going to the board on Tuesday, and we have one currently at Farrell Middle School.
Okay, so that's right now at the school level, this Farrell?
It is at the school level.
Is it the same book, a different book?
It is a different book.
A different book, okay.
If there has been anything submitted within the last two weeks, I don't have that information. So I'll, I can find out if there's any other additional ones.
Also, is it the same committee each time at the district level? Or does that committee change in any way?
To the chair, it's the same supervisors that we have within our district. The only thing that may change is a PTA representative, as PTA has availability and any other changes. Other than that, it could be potentially the same.
And if a book is challenged at the same school, you know, another book, is it the same committee or is that change at the school level for each challenge?
It's the same committee.
It's the same, okay. And then, so only one to date has gone through our process, correct? The one that we're going to hear?
To the chair, yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then the process.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Member Hahn.
So just a question about way of work. These are important questions. I guess the question is, do you want to ask them and have him get back with you or?
Please ask, answer that.
Yeah. I think one of the things we said about way of work is just preparing, just because it's, if the answers aren't there, if they're not accurate, then the superintendent and the cabinet aren't ready. Like, if you're giving misinformation without having those questions ahead of time, we talked a lot about that with way of work.
I would certainly give Mr. Connor some grace if it was, you know, two or four.
It's important to ask the questions, and it's just a question of whether he's, they're preparing it or not.
Well, I have one more question.
Okay.
And it's, you know, nothing that's earth-shattering by any means or difficult to answer. So Mr. Porter, this question is for you. The process that we have in place for challenging books is a process, not a policy?
But you have, there's a very general policy.
Yes.
There's a very general policy.
The board having their discretion to remove a book.
Right, and that tracks state statute, and then the superintendent develop procedures.
Sure. So given that that's not policy, and it's a procedure, at any time, does the superintendent or the board chair have the authority to call a special called meeting when a book is being challenged? Or if there's an abundant amount of concern over a book or certain book, since it's not policy?
The procedures in place are adapted by the superintendent. The chair or the other board members aren't involved in the development of the procedures. The procedures call for the challenge to ultimately be heard by the board if the person seeking the appeal takes it to the board level. And they're proceeded, the procedure set out two weeks' notice and other procedural things that are in there. But that's on, in the superintendent's side of the house, not the chair or the board. It calls for a special called board meeting to hear it. So that's why it's, he set the meeting.
But at his discretion, can he call a special called board meeting at any time to hear to, for a book? It doesn't have to go through the process.
Yes, it needs to go through the, no, it needs to go through the process unless he changes the procedures. So states.
So is it his discretion to change the procedure?
Let me be clear. The Florida statutes require the district develop a process for hearing book challenges. That's on his side of the house. He's done that. It hasn't really happened here before. This is a new process for the district. These procedures were adopted fairly recently, and we need to follow that process. So the only way you would have a special called board meeting is if a parent or someone else that's eligible to file an appeal files an appeal. He wouldn't do it on his own. He doesn't have any authority to bring a book to you on his own. That's the current policy, and that's the current procedure. Excuse me?
Sorry, so they can give it to me. I agree. You're right.
I'm confused.
I didn't mean to interrupt you, I'm sorry.
I can give you a book to bring?
No, no, no.
I'm, I'm, I don't, okay, I'm not sure what's happening.
You continue, sir.
So if the board wants to look at its policy or look at the procedures, you could, and that's, there's a workshop scheduled for May 2, I think, where you're going to be discussing these. And at that time, you can give the superintendent input on the procedures or change your own policy. That's within the authority of the board. But currently, the only way a book gets to this board is if someone challenges it and it is brought before you through the appeal process. And there are two layers before that. That can change. We don't have to do that.
No, I'm asking because as you can imagine, getting inundated with a lot of these procedural types of questions, and I need some clarity around that.
So I think it's important, we have to get through this board meeting tonight, and obviously there's a lot of public interest. I think the intent is before your meeting next Tuesday to brief you all on what you're really going to be doing. Next Tuesday is not a time for discussion about what we're talking about right now. It's an appeal of a book. And I am going to intrude on your conversation if it looks like you're really getting into a broader discussion, because that's not the time for it.
Right. That's why I'm asking now, because I, you know, between now and then, there's, this is the only public place that we can all, you know, hear the answers to all this at the same time. I would ask, just my time's running out, moving forward, is there a way that we can get weekly or bi-weekly updates on the number of book challenges as they change, whether via email or some type of format that, you know, Mr. Connor can?
I mean, I can answer that. To the chair, I have no problems with if there's a challenge on a bi-weekly basis that we see, start seeing a major number to provide that information to the board. And I'm sorry to disrupt what you were saying, but I do believe the other issue is that there is conversation about a workshop that's forthcoming, to have conversation about procedures, what we're doing, what training we're providing, how we review, and how are we selecting, what that process looks like. The issue is, it just keeps getting pushed back. And I mean, I think that ought to be made a priority, and I can work through.
I would love if you and the chair would make that a priority, you know, given certainly the interest.
That needs to have a conversation. And what I was disrupting, I didn't mean to disrupt Mr. Porter, because Mr. Porter's spot on with this conversation, is that, you know, right now, as superintendent, I have the authority or the power to make any of those hard decisions.
Right. And I think that's important, you know, to get on the record that, you know, because I'm, like I said, I'm getting inundated with a lot of questions on who has the authority to do what. And that's why I wanted to clear this up. And there's also just a lot of questions around, I think there's this perception that we've got 50 or 100 book challenges. So I wasn't, honestly, I thought it was more than two myself, so I'm a little surprised it's only two. Or, no, and I understand that's not a hard, fast number, but, you know, if you could just give us an update on what that number is, just so we have a sense of what to expect as we move forward through these processes. You know, and I do look forward to the workshop. I know I requested that back in December. I know we're like, you know, really, you know, trying to map all this out, but, you know, it's just, I'm sure many of us are getting a lot of questions about it on, wherever you stand on the issue, people are kind of curious as to how we're, how this is being managed. So I appreciate, I appreciate your input. Thanks.
Thank you, Member Hahn. Member Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. What? And Member Hahn, I agree. We definitely need to get this cleared up as best we can as a board in the sunshine. And, you know, it's going to be for the clarity of our, of our parents and even more for myself and other board members, no doubt. My comments are, well, this is the DODIA grants. $1.7 million was given to the STEM schools at, right around the MacDill Air Force. And the reason is, is because the children that, as we all know, from MacDill travel a lot, and they don't necessarily have one place to stay for a long time. And this grant is really going to the STEM and STEAM schools within regions, and ours is the MacDill region. And this is a nice, healthy grant. Thank you to Melissa Magado and Mr. McCauley, who was also there with the celebratory check. We want to thank Wing Commander Colonel Adam Bingham from MacDill, who shared a robust conversation about how it's so critical that we do give the higher level learning thinking skills to our military families. And we're just blessed to have received that amount of money. So thank you, DODIA. And next is, you know, I wanted to recognize the Thurgood Marshall Club, the African-American Task Force, led by myself and Fred Hearns and Shake Washington. We don't ever talk about who put together all these Thurgood Marshall Clubs, and this is the judge that was responsible for individual rights, civil liberties, limiting the scope of criminal punishment, a lot of, a lot of areas that show equity and equal treatment. And one of the things that we decided was to have Thurgood Marshall Clubs, but Allison Edgecombe was the one who promoted it as much as she possibly can, one wonderful community member. Thank you, Allison. And so so far, she has eight elementary school, there's eight of them in elementary schools, 16 in middle schools, and 11 in the high schools, a total amount of clubs. And this started just, the clubs started last year. So it's 35 clubs, Thurgood Marshall Clubs. And I just think she just did a lot of work, and we just appreciate her combining history, African-American history, and into the clubs that really are emblematic of diversity. So the other news item that I have, and I mentioned it at the workshop, was the maritime course taught by John Peratus at Jefferson. And this was out of the United States, one of 50 maritime courses in the state, and it's at Jefferson. And one of the students, his name is Jordan Washington, was accepted to the Maritime Marine Military Academy, Maritime Marine Military Academy, and all the tuition's paid for. But this is a teacher that works just like what we heard today so many times, you know, in the morning, in the, during the day, of course, and then at night, and the weekends, and his wife also teaches there. So, you know, just brilliant teachers who give and give. And really, really want to thank this wonderful teacher, John Peratus. Last, and let's never last, but because we have the Race for Education, Van Ayers is in the background, who wants to really come in first place. The Race for Education 5K and One Mile Fun Run is April 1, a Saturday. And I did promise the board stopwatches in case they would like to beat their last 5K time or compete with each other. So every one of you are getting a stopwatch, and if you don't want one, give it to your, maybe your son or your friend. But I don't know, Jessica Vaughn, you don't want one, right?
I'll give one to my son.
Okay. Because I, now I might run out.
For a chance, please. I'll tell you. Now, I know that Shake maybe will make.
I'll be walking fast.
I have another one at home. Anyway. Oh, okay. All right. I wasn't sure you could. Oh, wait, I was supposed to talk to Hannah to go lead. All right, so that's the end of my comments.
Thank you, Member Gray. I said, these look so expensive. You should have taken the price off, because they look like they're a lot more than they are. I mean that in a good way. I mean that in a positive way.
Well, they're valued.
They're expensive, you know, so fancy. Okay, I'm digressing. Member Vaughn?
Thank you. I have a lot of things to cover in a short amount of time, so I'm going to move fast. First of all, thank you for talking about AirDrop, Member Perez, and your work on talking about social media and the dangers of the internet. I think that's a conversation we definitely need to have as a board collectively. Secondly, also, thank you, Member Washington, for taking the moment of silence to dedicate to Sam Bell. That is a huge crushing loss. For people who don't know, he was in the House of Representatives, and then he was the founder of the USF College of Public Health. You know, his wife was Commissioner of Education and President of USF for a long time. His daughter is our representative in the House, and his other daughter actually serves on the school board at Orange County. So that family has dedicated their life to public service and education and been fierce champions for education. And I want to send my deepest condolences to that family. And Sam, I got to see him a few months ago. He was always a big supporter of Mort Community School. He put a lot into that school, so I got to see him. So very sad to hear that we've lost him. Next, I would like to, just for the record, since we've been talking about legislation and how that's going to affect us, I have read that there is legislation to charge people who house undocumented citizens with a felony. And since we do have undocumented students in our schools, I'd like to get some feedback on what that's going to look like if that legislation passes for the safety of our students and how that's going to affect them going to school and what that looks like. So I just want to kind of put that out there so we can start having that conversation. Also, I would like to officially ask, since we all kind of came to consensus about it, and they have been so patient to put Carrollwood K8 on the next agenda, simply because people are tracing out of that school every single day this year, waiting for an answer on that. And we spend so much time talking about retention to keep our families in the school. And it sounds like at the last, you know, workshop, we did have some consensus with that. And I know Ms. Rendon worked very hard to move some things forward, and they have been very patient and very kind and very diligent. So as a board member, especially for District 3, I'd like to officially request that. And then I would like to say to, you know, all of our staff and our schools and everyone at the district, welcome back from spring break. I hope it was an opportunity to recharge. I know this year has been another year of challenging years. I really appreciate the comments from all of my board members, especially Member Rendon about prioritizing our staff and our teachers, especially when it comes to livable wages. And I think that as a board, I'm glad to hear that that's a priority coming forward. So I'm hoping that we will have an executive session if we don't hear from the magistrate soon, so we can discuss that as a board. That's another request. I know other board members probably are interested in that if they haven't already requested it. It's time that we have that conversation if we're not going to hear from the magistrate. And then, you know, finally, I would just like to say, we And then, you know, finally, I would just like to say, we all, you know, as board members, have to really decide, you know, how we make our decisions. And for me, I try to be really reflective of my community. I spend a lot of time in District 3, talking to people in my schools, my neighbors, community members. I like to get a lot of feedback on almost every decision that we're going to make, especially from the people who elected me. I take a lot of stock in the feedback that I get from my community. And I've had a really good relationship with my community, and I just want to say a thank you to all of the people who have taken the time to answer my calls on issues that we've had coming up, that I want to get feedback on, people from different sides of the aisle, across the aisle, who have all been very kind and taken the time to really have some hard conversations, and help me see things from another perspective and the side of things. For anyone who's engaging in politics right now, from a place of kindness, and a way of trying to identify where we meet, or where we agree, and move forward, I just want to say, I really appreciate that, because sometimes, seeing all the hatred and anger and accusations that are unfair makes this job really frustrating, but what keeps me going, and what makes it really positive, is when I actually get into my community, and I have really good interactions with people who, again, I may not agree with. So, I just wanted to say a special thank you to everybody who answers the phone when I call, or meets for lunch, or takes the time to have the conversation with me, and I think that that is really what's important as we move forward collectively. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Member Vaughn. Member Rendon?
Well, I'd like to echo, welcome back to all of our staff across the district. Hope they had a well deserved break. I know my daughter enjoyed her time off. I had all three of them off, which is a big feat. But I also want to take time to thank all of our legislators up in Tallahassee, both of our senators and our representatives. It is a tireless job that they are doing every single day, away from their families, on an ongoing basis, and, you know, we deal with one district, they're dealing with the entire state. And so, they are truly out there trying to do the good of our entire state, and making it as best as they can. And right now, I was, had the privilege of being up there last week, and going to many committee meetings, meeting with many legislatures, and really, their focus is really on our children right now. Their focus is really on what's good for our kids, choices for our families, and it's an ongoing, whether it's social media, whether it's schools, whether it's parent rights, whatever it is, they have a large focus on the future of our state and the children. And so, I just want to personally thank each and every one of them for the time that they put in. I know it's hours that are countless without their families, like I said, and, look, their reimbursement is even less than ours, so they do a lot, and so I want to personally thank them. I also want to thank Tony Saladino and the Saladino family for the Saladino Tournament this past week. All of our high schools within the county participated in the baseball tournament. It was, I did enjoy going to see Bloomingdale and Strawberry Crest before I left for Tallahassee. Bloomingdale did lose, but congratulations to Jesuit, I believe they were the winners of the entire tournament, but yet, yet, Plant gave its all into the finals. So, but, you know, this is just an example of our dedicated students, whether it's in art, or music, or athletics, that these kids are working all the time, and they're striving for goals that they want to make. And so, I want to take an extra minute just to say, you know, good for you, and thank you so much for your dedication to the parents, to the coaches, to the schools that were hosts. It took the entire community to come together to put this tournament on each and every year, and so, thank you, the Saladino family, for everything they continue to do for our community. You know, Tony was an educator, a teacher, and so, what a place to give back, but to our young men and women of our community. So, thank you again. You know, as, we had a lot of comment tonight, and we have a lot of comment on a regular basis, but one thing I would like to know is, multiple times, a statue was referenced, and that was statue, I believe, 847, and I think that would be good for us to provide that, whether through the district or through you, Mr. Porter, on that reference to that statue, that we can all be understanding of where that was coming from. I don't know. It was in reference at one point to the book we're going to review, which is why I ask. So, if we could get a copy of that, the board get a copy of that?
I think what would be helpful for all the board is to provide you a comprehensive sort of packet for this. I know Ms. Pepe and Terry Connor is working on that as well, but I think from my end, from the legal end, giving you some context for this would be helpful. The meeting is next week. Again, my goal is to have you get through this meeting tonight and provide that sort of information to you this week, but I'll certainly do that. I have in mind what I think would be helpful for you, but any input that you need, that you think would be helpful, I would appreciate as well, and I can get that for you. But I'll certainly provide all the statutes that have been referenced, as well as the policies and the procedures that are already in place.
Right. So, and again, I was going to reference back to the fact that there is a policy that we are referencing. That policy had to come from some statue.
Right, yeah, and it's all there, and we can provide that to you.
Right. So, thank you so much for that. I think that's critically important. I think I make that very clear on an ongoing basis, that it is the responsibility of our board to follow statute and rule from the department. That is something that I did speak with the DOE about recently, about the American Library Association, and so, if we could also, as a district, provide the board on exactly how we got to the American Library Association as our reference for doing things, because that is not part of the rule of the DOE. So, however we got there as a district, I think it's important that the board get that information.
Yeah, again, I think that's going to be part of the workshop. It can provide context for you, but again, I just want to reiterate that Tuesday's meeting is about a specific book. All this is important, and it should be discussed, and you should have input on it. We just have to be careful about what you discuss next Tuesday. The selection process is of paramount importance, this whole thing, but it's the context of which you consider it next Tuesday, absolutely for the workshop, but the superintendent can provide that information for you on the selection process.
Not just the selection process, but the American Library Association is what we have referenced in our procedures, to how we've come up with the checklist that our committees are using, the process in which we are putting books in our library, the process in which this book got to where it went to, and then the process in which we are vetting it.
Got it.
So, because we are using and reference that, that association is our reference to how we're doing business, I think it's important that we get, how do we come to that? Because it is not part of state rule that we use the American Library Association. Yep, and so, again, I, again, I'm going back to rule and law, so that we are all on the same page on that, and I did consult with the DOE that that is not part of the DOE's rule.
Correct.
So, again, thank, and I'm not asking for your, I mean, I know, and that was not really a question, it was more of, could we get for the entire board that information? So, and again, thank you all so much.
Okay. Thank you, Member Rendon. Just a couple things, you know, once again, thank you, Member Vaughn, for our condolences with Sam Bell. I mean, someone and a family, you know, entire family, and Sam has done so much for public education. Also, you know, Member Hahn, I think we do need to look at that agenda. I think there's a lot of people coming, and they're very curious, and so, if we can move that up, I definitely would like to look at that and see if we can move it up sooner, so that way, we can really tackle this and look at this, because I want people to know that nobody wants pornography in schools, like I've said. There's not a single person up here who wants this. We want to make sure that there's a process, and that there's a process that withstands 10, 15, 20 years from now, because what might seem, you know, horrible a year from now, and five years from now, who knows what it's going to look like, because I don't think we ever thought things would look like they do now, right? So, you just don't know what the future holds. And then, I want to say thank you to Member Perez regarding the cyber task force. I've talked about this a lot. You know, pornography anywhere is a problem. It's such a problem with our phones. It creates, there's so much violence, there's drugs, there's pornography. I mean, just, even today, if you were out here, you know, you go to any school and take your airdrop off and see what happens, you know? These are really big issues, but we also have to realize that schools can only do so much, you know? You know, we want the parents to be in charge, so when parents hand their phones to kids when they're seven or eight years old, and they're not really monitoring that, we aren't the parents. You know, parents are their own parents of their children, but they need to continue to monitor, because there's so many issues going on. And just a couple things, thank you, Member Gray, for the watch, but really, thank you for that Race for Education. I thought it was amazing last year. It was just an amazing race, and I'm really excited to walk again this year in it, but thank you, and I'll use my watch to see how fast I can walk. And then, just a couple things, you know, March is Women's History Month, and it's really important to remember women and how much we do. I started that month with the Girl Scouts of West Central Florida, with the event of Women in Distinction, where they honored so many wonderful women in our community in what they do, and that was so amazing to hear these women, and to see so many of our Girl Scouts throughout our schools. I mean, I had all these great pictures, all of these Girl Scouts, but I didn't know if I had the photo release, so I didn't want to share it. But it was great to see all these young ladies, and to see all these role models in front of them, so that was an amazing lunch. And then, finally, just a reminder, the Future Career Academy is looking for volunteers for the next phase, which is really getting the students out there to get the job. So, we're looking for, you know, companies that need employees, which is our high school students, and this will be open to all of our high school seniors, and once that is done, it's open for our community as well. So, I just wanted to share a few dates. April 6 will be East Tampa, which will be located in the Embassy Suites. Central and South Tampa will be April 11, and that will be at the Convention Center. Northwest and Northeast Tampa will be at the Convention Center, April 12. South Hillsborough will be at the Regent on April 19. East Hillsborough with April 20, and then Plant City, April 27, at the Trinkle Center. So, all of these events are from 8 to 2, so if you know of a company that's looking to hire employees, please, Future Career Academy, and if you're, we're looking for volunteers, please make sure you participate. I know that I'm participating in several of these dates, and I look forward to that. And thank you, everyone, for all your hard work, and I hope everyone had a great spring break, and this meeting is adjourned.